Evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May 24th, 2023. It is 7 o'clock, so I am going to call the meeting of the Board of Library Trustees to order. Because we have two new board members, congratulations on your elections. If we could actually just go around and say our names and that we're present, just so that everybody hearing at home knows who we are. Erin, do you want to?
Yes, my name's Aaron Vandesteen, 3 Institute Road. I've been on the Board of Trustees. I think I was appointed in 2015 as part of a... Somebody had exited the Board, but I think trustees since like 2016.
Hi, Carrie Hogan, 17 Crescent Court. I'm a returning member to the Board from many years ago, and I'm so excited to join again, so thank you.
Beth Schreiber, Director of Grafton Public Libraries since 2013.
Dr. Stephanie Texera, 26 Sartell Road. This is the fourth year that I am on the Board, currently finishing up my second year as Vice Chair.
Roger Trahan for Old Upton Road, newly elected, and I'm really excited to be serving with all you folks.
Doug Bowman, 32 Elliott Trail. And I've been a trustee for a long time. I'm not sure how long. I think it's like 12 years or 13 years.
Before 2011. You were on the Board in 2011, for sure.
Dana Wilson, 16 Seaver Farm Lane. Been a trustee for a while.
It's actually posted. I'll have to look it up.
Look it up now.
It should be right on the website.
Yeah, it's on the town website. Yeah, it's on the town website.
Currently, John, who is also a trustee, is not currently present. All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 8th, 2023 special meeting? And May 8th, 2023 town meeting? We can separate those if there's any comments.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from town meeting. Second.
You go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, second.
I defer to you.
All right, hearing a first and a second on specifically the meeting minutes for town meeting. Any discussion?
Nope, I believe... Debbie, you corrected that John was... had attended. Okay, excellent. That's it.
All right, hearing no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Going back to the May 8th special meeting minutes, is there any comments?
I think you need to make a... Somebody needs to make a motion, right?
Motion, yeah.
I make a motion to accept the May 8th meeting minutes.
I second the motion to accept the May 8th meetings.
Hearing a first and a second on the special meeting minutes, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think I need to recuse... or not recuse myself, because that's not the right word, but abstain. Thank you. Abstain because I wasn't present.
Point of order, you do not need to have been present to approve meeting minutes, because you have put your faith in this body that they were accurate and...
Okay, I read them, and they looked fine to me, so... No further comment.
Hearing no further comment, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I move to approve the FY23 warrant number 46 in the amount of $8,058.54. This is for library expenses, including educational materials, periodicals, postage, mileage, fax finds, office supply, toner and copy lease. It also covers the digital Commonwealth membership, as well as $2,500 from state aid for the Renard bill approved from May 8th, from the gift account, and a replacement laminator that was recalled, and we have received the check back from that.
Is it 48 or 46? We're only voting on 46.
That's 46. No, that's 48, sorry.
Yeah, the 48 went out this week, and I usually don't ask you to look at it and vote on it in the same week, because it's not enough time to review it all, sorry.
Right.
So I guess I have a question, so...
I can pull it up.
Through you, Madam Chair. All right, so the email that Beth sent out said warrant number 48. And so you're saying that number 46 was attached?
Forty... So the bills are sent out every week. New trustees perhaps did not get 46, so I'm happy to pull it up. I have no idea why everything on my screen is so tiny. I'm really sorry. So 48 went out this week, just on Monday. We actually did it early. So it's actually 46 that we need to take a look at.
Okay, how much was that?
Could you pull that one up, please?
Yeah, because I didn't see 46.
Actually, it went out two weeks ago, because the previous week I was on vacation, so we didn't do a warrant. And I don't generally send them out with the meeting, because they've already gone out. I might need an IT expert to help me this figure. It was fine, and then I unplugged it and plugged it in again.
Yeah, we usually change resolutions.
Oh, 46. I found it. Warrant 46, looks like it's in the amount of $1,647.18, again, for educational supplies, building maintenance, office supplies, and program expenses, including new music stands for the ukulele program, which was purchased from the gift account. So do we have a motion to approve warrant 46?
Some of.
Second.
Hearing a first and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So just to explain, I think five or six years ago, we were able to vote to allow me to go ahead and just move forward with paying the bills based on budgeted for expenses. And then every week, and I send it to accounting so that they can make the payments, I include the trustees, and give you a copy of the warrant. And we've changed accounting software programs during the pandemic. So this is the new format, which is you have a total that tells you the account it comes out of. General Fund is what we voted at town meeting. And then there's other special revenue accounts, including a gift account that's revolving, our state aid money. If we're paying things out of trust funds, which I practically never do, that would be here as well. And then there's just a brief summary of the vendors. So if you haven't looked at these in a while, or you're new to it, you'll start to recognize some things are recurring, like our book vendors, Ingram and Midwest Tape. WB Mason is office supplies. Koopman right down the street, we get materials sometimes that are office supplies or building maintenance supplies. I buy flowers. I think we got them at Koopman's. We have recurring costs like pest control, that's a building and maintenance cost. Worcester Elevator, we have a contract with. This might have been part of the annual inspection, but I also, I know I had to call them in April for an emergency repair, so it might be that this was an emergency repair bill that wasn't planned for or budgeted for, but that we took out of the building and maintenance account. Gale is a book vendor. And Amazon, we mentioned the music stands, because our program budget has been zero for two years in a row now, because we cut many of our expenses. We could put money into staffing. So we're paying a lot of program expenses out of the gift account, which is fairly healthy. So we bought 400, almost $500 worth of new music stands, because they were falling apart. So you've got a general page with a signature, a summary page, and then you've got a detail page. And when I send these out, there's not a lot of detail, so you have to send me a note if you want to see a specific invoice that itemizes everything that we're being paid.
This is helpful for me, because I remember the big stacks of invoices. I'm like, how did they do that during the pandemic? You know, it's lucky that you did that ahead of time.
Well, for the first half of the pandemic, it was the same stack of invoices and purchase orders and everything, and we had to scan it. But now it's all digital, so we scan and upload all the invoices, and then they all get connected automatically through Vadar. Yeah, yes.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
Sorry for taking the time, but...
That's okay, and just a point of order where I brought it up for the warrant 48. No, I had brought up 48 by mistake, so I'm just going to move that we postpone that matter to the June 28th meeting, so that everybody can see that. Can I just have a second on that? I know, but I brought it up.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just think a point of order. I don't know generally if the Chair makes motions. At least I hadn't in the past. Maybe I was wrong.
So according to Robert's rules, if it is on the agenda, I can move for approval, and then there can be a second in discussion. If it is not on there, then someone else has to bring it up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, so that will be covered. Moving on to ongoing business. Beth, could you give us a building program and grant update?
Sure. The major thing that happened in April was the arrival of doors to close off our teen maker space, Room 120, and the presentation area on 107. They do look beautiful. They unfortunately were not... did not arrive as was designed. So if you're standing in front of the doors and you look at them, and it would take me a while to dig for a picture, there were existing windows in both of those spaces with a kind of a halfway point line to prevent anybody from walking through them thinking it was not, you know, glass. And the doors arrived, and their middle point is lower. And it was supposed to be the same height as the existing bar. So it doesn't line up, and it's off, very noticeably off.
I noticed in the teen space, they are a little clunky, like the way... In the conference room A and B, they look beautiful. They look great, but in this...
Yeah, and the handles which they attached are off by about 3/16ths of an inch. They're circular to match the entry doors to the building. They're called storefront style. And again, they were designed to line up, and the installer had them off, noticeably off. The installer also didn't do any cleanup. They're dirty, they're smudged, they're scratched. Each half has a side that you can lock, so you can open just one side if you want to. And it's got, I don't know the word, but there are these little pieces that flip up and out and lock into the top, fit into a little module.
I have a picture if you want me to email it to you.
Sure. And there's no... They didn't install the anchor point in the floor for that little piece to drop down and anchor into. So they were supposed to come the beginning of April. They delayed two weeks, and then I gave them new dates to come and told them, because it was vacation week, to not come until at least Thursday, when I was around. And they showed up unannounced at 7 o'clock on a Tuesday morning, and had done much of the work by the time I arrived from my ship. So I've conveyed my frustration and dissatisfaction to the construction team, and we'll be speaking about it at our building committee meeting. This isn't what we ordered, and we shouldn't have to pay for any repairs to correct it. They also arrived without locks, and it turned out nobody scheduled the locks, or they weren't included as part of the construction projects. So I've had to take on the additional responsibility of getting the matching anchors, which are $170 apiece. But I don't have the authority to do that. The former clerk of the works does. So now it's becoming a longer, more involved process, getting me authorized to order locks and keys for the building that I'm the steward of. So it's been... It looks nice at a...
It looks really great.
But not what we ordered. So more to come on that.
Do we have to raise our hands? So did you confirm that the design of the doors was correct? And the construction was wrong?
The architect confirmed, yeah. Yes.
Do we know what the remedy for that is? Will the doors be taken back?
There's two options, yeah. They can either order in the correct doors and install the correct doors, or they can make repairs to the doors on site. So that's the conversation, I believe, for building committee.
Okay, good. I... Yeah.
Anything else for building committee? Any questions?
If you sent an email, I don't have it.
Photo?
Yeah, I did send it.
Did you send it to the group?
I sent it to trustees.
You may not be able to email that group yet, because you may not be added to it. You are added to it?
Yep, took care of it this week.
Anyway, we... Yeah.
What says sending?
Before moving on to the next item, John just came in, so John, if you could just introduce yourself so that everybody at home knows who you are now that we are not on Zoom?
Yeah, I'm John Babriski. I am a trustee, and I believe I was elected last May. And I don't know, is there anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
All right, so there are still a couple of other outstanding items with our grant. I finally have a draft of the final financial report to send in, so I'll be doing that next week. If I can do that in the narrative, I don't have to write monthly reports anymore to Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which would be something off my plate and wonderful. We are out to bid at the moment for installation quotes from an extract company to install the humidifier for the special collections, like historical room. We had taken it out of... made a change order to take it out of the scope of project, because it didn't have the right plumbing and wiring for what they had thought they were going to put in the space. And then we got something that would work, but now have to get it installed. So in that room currently, there's a big box with an industrial dehumidifier in there to protect our old town meeting records, library records, the Grafton News Archive, and all those things that we built a special room to contain into. We're still waiting for a sign to go at the common entrance of the building so that people who come up to the staircase can be redirected around to an accessible entrance. That was like an ADA requirement. And for whatever reason, it's just taken a long time to get the design and the approval to move forward on that. So that's still in process. So we're now almost two years beyond our substantial completion, and still have this punch list, and are working on a few items. I'm waiting for handles for the display cabinet in the lobby. We do have a lock, but you have to push on the glass door to open and close it, which isn't... doesn't feel very safe. So getting little handles installed. So it's down to some little nitty gritty things like that. Progressives.
All right, does anybody have any questions about the grant update?
I'll give you the email address.
All right, Beth, could you move on to the FY23 budget update?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't run a report and send it out in advance. We did get a spending freeze across the board at the beginning of May. Don't spend any more money, because people's utility bills in each department are way too high. So I checked in and said, well, we just like bought toilet paper and soap, because we need those to run and keep the building open for the next eight weeks. And we have purchase orders, and we're mandated by law to spend a percentage of the budget on books, so... So do I need to... And instead, like, run every purchase by Evan, and Mary Loria came back with, "Oh, no, your budget's fine. Go ahead and continue." Now, don't be extravagant, but the things that you've budgeted for, you can continue to spend. So that's a relief. We've been on a book purchasing hiatus with our main vendor Ingram, because we had to make some account level changes that made them put our accounts on freeze, on hold. So we haven't had new material coming in, so you will see a lot of invoices in June for things that we are finally able to purchase here at the end of May and into the next couple of weeks. I'm not anticipating finishing at a deficit. I'm hoping that we will actually be able to spend all of the money that we asked for. The exception would be our part-time personnel budget, where I had come to the Board and asked for up to $28,000 to add temporary staff, because we had multiple staff out on paid leave from March through the end of the fiscal year. And I'm still just tracking that weekly, and then we'll ask for a general ledger transfer before the end of the fiscal year to balance out whatever needs to be balanced out. It may not be that much. We were at about seven... I think almost $8,000 spent when I told you that two weeks ago. So we're in good shape. And I don't think I'm going to need everything I asked for for personnel.
Does anyone have any questions about the FY23 budget update? Beth, could you give us an update on FY24 budget?
Sure. Thank you to everyone who came to town meeting. Our budget passed with no holds this year, which is always a relief. We are, for the first time, at over $1 million in operating expenses for the library. I think it was $428,000 a year when I started 10 years ago.
Wow.
With a much smaller facility, a much smaller staff, and a much lower cost of living. You've seen it when you go to the supermarket, like exert 30% more than they used to be. And that's true of everything, just across the board. So we're always trying to do less with more, which is really stressful. Always using our Mass Higher Educational Consortium discounts, or going out to bid to get the best prices that we can, and being very fiscally responsible. The budget added additional hours for our administrative assistant. It's giving us an 18-hour-a-week additional person in our teen space, where we desperately need a second body to help manage the middle school, after-school crowd. So that'll be, starting in July, we may shift those hours around and wait until fall to hire, because we'll need that after-school time, you know, the end of August. And then, anything that we could keep level funded, we did. We still are zeroed out in several accounts for FY24 that the town had historically paid for, including dues and memberships, marketing. We kept travel really low. We did add $10,000 back into the programming budget, so that's now a town expense as opposed to a gift account expense. And we'll see how we do. We have a major credit still from our utility vendor, but that will eventually run out. So I planned FY24 budget with, assuming that we would be able to have basically free heater-electric, I forget which it is, National Grid. We have a big credit with National Grid. But in a few years, it's about $200,000, and we spent some of that. We were averaging, I think, $11,000 to $13,000 a year for National Grid in the old building. And the expenses in the new building were probably three times that.
So why do we have a large credit?
It had to do with us, I believe, getting billed at a residential rate instead of a commercial or business rate. So that was a major expense. And then we also have energy credits, because we built an energy-efficient building. So it was a combination of those two things that there was money.
So I'm sorry, like, we were getting billed at a commercial...
A higher, at a higher rate, at a residential. We were billed at a residential rate, and we are not a residence at the library, so... Yeah, so they were able to correct the billing rate, and then give us a credit for what we overpaid over years. And then, street lamps, which we used to pay for, probably dating back to when the trustees built a parking lot and put in lighting. We finally... Those do not fall under the library's budget anymore. That falls under the general town budget. They have a streetlight account, and no other departments were paying for the streetlights near their property, so we were able to also shift that over.
So I have a question. Just to be more forward-thinking, right, when that credit runs out, are there any, you know, library grants that we might qualify for energy? I know we talked about putting solar panels on the top, but that didn't really pan out.
Yeah, the roof is wired for solar panels.
Yeah.
And we are getting money back if we get our Silver Lead certification, about $160,000, which we could use to purchase the solar panels that the building has been wired for. But the roof is not very conducive to putting a lot of solar panels onto it based on where all of the equipment on the roof went.
Yeah.
So that wasn't great planning. There isn't space to put a lot of panels. And when I brought it up with Evan, he said, "We're already getting so many credits townwide. It actually may not make a really significant difference in your utility bill, and is probably not worth pursuing for your building."
Do you know how many panels they were talking about?
Nope, I don't.
Okay.
I don't. Just that I've suggested it and been deterred, so...
I just had a quick question about that, the $160,000. Now, has that... Is that official, that we did get that?
No, we're still in... I didn't say this in our... in the building program grant update. We are still commissioning the HVAC in the building.
We're still working?
We're still commissioning it, because it is still not working correctly.
What does commissioning mean?
Somebody comes through and says, "Yes, it's installed as it was supposed to, and it works and does what it's supposed to." So... They have to finish that process and do some documentation for the final application for the lead certification. And we've passed the deadline for this year, so...
Who's the person that does that?
It's a combination of the construction team and Colliers, who does the commissioning. Yeah, and the three companies who are working on the HVAC. Veterans is the installer. Advantage does the online piece. I have like a login, and I can actually change temperature in the building, like, from here. And then LG did all of the thermostat units. The two issues that I see still as outstanding is, I think the temperature's off by about two degrees through the whole building. So the thermostat on the wall says one thing, and then the thermometer at the desk, or next to the thermostat, is off by two degrees. And there's also a really loud noise from the unit that's on the roof on top of... above the staff room. So it'll occasionally make a very loud clunking noise, and then rumble and whirr, like there's a truck driving overhead. And it is not conducive to taking a break in the staff break room. And I've brought it up multiple times, and I'm still looking for it to be addressed and remediated. And the last I heard is that Matt Kay from CTA Construction is going to come and sit with the HVAC team in that room and listen for the sound that I'm describing.
The loud screeching duck noise over nonfiction was again tonight, too. So I wrote down the times, and it was like every half hour for a while, which is maybe something with the timing, but... So that's an issue with it, too.
Yeah, certainly. It could just be in the wintertime, but we were having a friends meeting, I think, in one of the conference rooms along the parking lot corner of the building.
Large print room, yeah.
Is it? Yeah. There's like some gurgling.
That's... I think that's... They've told me that that's normal, but, you know, they also said the one in the staff room was... I'm reluctant to sign off on paying any more bills until it's corrected. But that goes to the building committee.
And are those noises... So they're not consistent? It's not like you hear...
No, and I've used my phone, and like I... The loud screech is almost like a hard water stop, and it's too quick to catch. And if I just have my phone on, like, I can actually hear the air blowing in the ducts, but not the rumble that's really low-pitched that's coming from the roof.
Can they program that to make all the noises in the middle of the night, maybe?
Maybe.
Good idea.
And just for clarification, while they're looking at that, is this money that we can expect, or future bills that we can expect that you're going to come to us and need funding for? Or is this kind of covered in the monies that we've already allocated towards the project?
It's money on top of the project. It can only go to the library and be used for things for the library. And I think the first thing that the building committee agreed to earmark it for were some kind of roof screens to face out to the common and shield passersby in the historic district from seeing the HVAC units up on top of the building, because that was a strong desire that was communicated by HDC, Historic District Commission, that we didn't have the money in the project to take care of. So that's first priority.
From the 160,000?
From the 160,000.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then if it turns out, like... We still have about $70,000 left to pay the construction company with from retainage for things that we're still working on and correcting. So if it turns out that we need to do additional work, then, like, future bills relating to the project would also... would be like also the next thing we need to pay for.
Okay.
So this $160,000, is this part... You're saying this is part of the project? Or is it going to our budget? Because we're discussing FY24.
No, it's separate from the budget. It would go into the library's capital construction account, from like what we voted on at town meeting. So it was figured into the grant as an addition. So we wrote a grant, we estimated the whole project at $16.6 million and change. And then if we met a Silver Lead certification, they would give us a bonus of $160,000 for meeting having that level of green building.
And that's separate from any revolving accounts? That's separate construction? Okay.
Yeah, like, we wouldn't put it in the library's gift account. It wouldn't go back to Town General Fund. I think it goes back to the library capital.
And that doesn't have a maximum? I know that revolving accounts are indicated with, you know, that they're identified with maximum balances. This does not have a maximum?
I don't believe so. We can check with Mary Loria. Town accountant would know.
Any more discussion for the budget FY24? All right, hearing none, do you have an IT update for us, Beth?
We finally got deep freeze installed on our public access computers, which means no matter what somebody does to the machine, after we reset it, it gets restored to a default setting. And any, you know, passwords they signed in, anything they downloaded, any resumes that they save, personal documents, it all gets wiped out. So, yes, I don't... I haven't gotten a lesson yet in how to use it.
So does that happen automatically, or does a staff member need to do that, like, to each of the machines?
We bought an enterprise edition that allows us to make a change to all the machines from one location.
That's wonderful.
It is wonderful. It's over $2,000, and it comes up for renewal July 1st, and it's not budgeted for. So I'll be looking for money to pay for it for next year.
Is that the recurring cost, or is that the initial cost? So it's more of a subscription?
I think it's the same price every year, but I'll double-check. Yeah, I think it's an annual subscription.
Who's the vendor?
Phronics.
So is that the direct vendor, or do you buy it through reseller?
I believe it's the direct vendor, yeah.
But that's the piece of software that, like, when the person's done with the session, it basically resets everything back to the beginning.
Prevents people from making changes, putting pictures on the desktop and that kind of thing. Installing Minecraft.
Could that be something that would be budgeted for going forward, or could be?
Yes, as soon as I have all the staffing I need.
Yes.
That's just the priority going forward for the next six years, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
It is the vendor, by the way.
Can I ask you, so, so I'm sorry, so you're saying it won't be budgeted next year? So where are we expecting it to come from?
So this last year, the board paid for it out of state aid. Yeah, so I will probably bring you a bill in June and ask for you to fund it again. If you would like to take it up with the town, then it took a year to install the software we purchased, I encourage you to do so.
Any other, um, questions or comments on IT update?
How are the laptops, uh, being used? What's the utilization like?
We haven't started circulating them yet. We tried two different solutions to make the security system beep. If you tried to walk out the door with them, um, and neither RFID tag was successful. So we think we're just gonna not security, use a security tag on them. They have to be checked out to a patron. They won't be accessible to the public. So if one leaves the building, we will know who has it checked out and we'll bill them accordingly.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect.
Yeah, so we should be able to roll it out probably in June.
Great.
And deep freeze is on the laptops as well?
Yeah. Wonderful. Yeah.
Are there, I just have a question about the theft, are there, you know, like the air tags? Do you know air tags?
No.
There are the little things, they're like a quarter and then you can track them with your iPhone, so you can stick them in your luggage and if your luggage appears. Are there any things like that that we can put on? Yeah, like that.
Oh, okay, yeah, I had a key.
I'm wondering if things like that can be used at the library.
They're like twenty-five bucks a piece.
To keep, for the more expensive things from walking away.
If you will send me a link, we can price it out and ask for a test one to try. So we, we wanted to not have something on the outside of the laptop that could be easily removed. So we actually had IT open up the laptop and put the RFID tag inside, because with our books, it's on the inside.
Sure.
Yeah.
Great idea.
And it, with books, it triggers, but for whatever reason, no matter where we placed it in the laptop, and sometimes with a thicker, um, a different kind of a tag on the outside of it, it, it didn't set up, like if you were, you had to be four inches to the gate or it wouldn't recognize that there was a tag on it. Which isn't true with our books and other materials, so. It works for those.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Was it in a laptop bag?
No, just like holding it, like just carry it out like under your arm and.
I, I think it's a fine solution, Beth, just to, just to put a, um, yeah, they check it out.
Check it out?
Yeah.
But it just can't be, uh, removed from the building.
I think, um, we'll have to run a report every day to make sure that the whole list is inside, is still in the building. And then contact anybody who it's still checked out to and figure out, we know did staff not check it in or did somebody leave with it?
Yeah.
So.
All right, um, Grafton Public Library Capital Campaign, Dana?
Okay, well, a lot is happening. Um, right now, we're pleased to say that, um, we've, the donor, the, they're like donor plaques, we've been calling them donor plaques, but it's, um, they're like thank you plaques to all the donors who have given, um, monies for specific, specific rooms and areas of the library. So those are, are finished and they are currently in the town of Grafton. So Sunshine has them and, um, we're planning on having them arrive within the next week or so. And, um, it's a date when both Beth will be here and I will be here, too. So we're gonna have them installed. And, um, I'm not sure how long the installation will ta, take, but I did, I did think of an idea, Beth, that I'll come back to you with. So, so that's happening. And then, um, we're planning the, kind of, well, we're trying to do it as close as possible, but it seems like it may be a little bit more difficult than we had envisioned. We're trying to have, we want to have donor parties to thank the donors who supported the Capitol Campaign. So, um, we had chosen a date in June, but Beth is not going to be here. So that, I said, ouch, we can't do that. So we're gonna, we're looking at dates in, in July and I still have to confirm whether that makes sense, but that's where the thinking is right now. So, um, so that is underway and that will be done. Um, there's a group that's working on the Capitol Campaign team. Um, the other thing we've been working really hard on is, um, working with Beth and others. We, um, we have been buying furniture and different things for the library, as you know, and the shelving units and a lot of other things. So, um, we, we've confirmed, um, items that we are, want to order. Some of it's patio furniture for outside, both the community patio and the teens patio and, um, also the children's patio, children's amphitheater. Um, so we're ordering all that material right now, working with Beth and her team to, you know, to sort through what, what makes sense. And that's where we are. We already did that, so that's good news. So, um, Doug is our, as the treasurer, he, um, as the treasurer of the Capitol Campaign, he's responsible for ordering all of our materials, whatever we need, he orders it. So he's doing that right now. So that's the good news and, um, only good news. The garden update, we're gonna be working on cleaning up the gardens a bit and that's gonna happen within, um, probably by the end of June. And so I had a meeting with, um, Pearl and I also had a meeting with Christina Creppolday. She's been our, our team leader gardener and I actually was gonna talk with John to see if he might be, we might be to get help from some of the Boy Scouts. What we're thinking would be really good if they, if they could work with, if Christine could tell them, kind of direct them saying, I need this weed taken out, this plant moved here near, and then have them do it. So we're thinking about that. So we're gonna get in touch with you and also Erin or anyone else that wants to know, wants to, would like to help what group, any group. So she has been doing a phenomenal job. She's been weeding and she comes almost every week. And she also has a very good knowledge of plants, so it's been really good. So we had a really good session with, um, Donna McDougall from, um, Pearl, because we're looking at different things and we're gonna kind of, um, shift some plants around that are better suited for other areas based upon whether they need shade or light or sun. So, um, that's going really well. I don't know if there's, there's much more. Doug, if I, if I left anything out, please let us know.
Yeah, no, I think that's it.
Right, um, first, Roger, I see you. Just first, I want to say thank you so much to Dana and Doug for, um, everything that you've been doing on the Capitol Campaign and I am very excited to be able to celebrate like the successes that all of you have done, um, in July when that date is announced, but Roger?
No, this is exciting. I marry your comments, uh, and also mention that whenever there are, are campaigns and there are pledges and, and things like that, how do you close out the books? Like, do we have a hundred percent of pledges that have come in? What percentage do we add? If you could speak to that?
Well, what we're doing basically, the Capitol Campaign will exist until forever. Um, we did that so that, um, you know, we want to be able to like in five years or three years from now, we need to, we need to raise money for a specific cause. We can do that. So we don't really ever close out the books. I mean, what we have done is, um, and Doug has been following this. We had individuals, we had a lot of individuals who donated money, some of it for out of the scope of the projects. That's why you see like the patio that's in the, you see the kids patio, the children's patio, the amphitheater, also the teens, and then the community, community patio and all the furnishings and all, all the landscaping, all the brickwork that you see in the front of the building, all the stoneware, that is all because of out of the scope projects. And we worked really closely with Andy DeShane's and the very, when he, um, was working on the project to kind of figure out what really, what do we need, what, what really works? And then, you know, we kind of worked with our donors and made it happen. So, um, we don't really close out on that. I mean, we have a few, we have some that are, we have some, we've worked it out. There are some individuals that are gonna be paying for a couple of years. So, um, Doug will follow that. And so when they're completed, then, you know, that will be, you know, that will finish their donation. That's the way we've done it.
Okay.
And we've, we've had very good luck. Things have been going fairly smoothly. It's only my, very minor problems.
Okay.
And overall, you know, some of the, some of the items like the green roof or some of the landscaping requires maintenance, right, yearly maintenance? So the plan was to hold back like ten percent of the funds for, for those kind of recurring costs.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments for Capitol Campaign update?
I do have another thank you. Um, also Capitol Campaign had suggested we poll the teenagers on what they wanted on their teen patio. Um, we were looking for outdoor games, so chess and checkerboard or backgammon board or dominoes. So they're voting right now. We did an online poll. So I've shared results.
Seen any of the votes yet?
We didn't know about that.
Checkers and dominoes. Like I think eighteen kids or so have participated, but.
Those are the top.
Yeah, and so I think the domino is just a flat, um, board, but it's got maybe a groove, so you can put your dominoes lined up.
Oh, yeah.
Which means that we'll have to buy dominoes and check them out for them to take outside, which is cheap.
We were anticipating doing, we want it, we're ordering chess, a chess, chess set. You know, it's gonna be, it's in the ground and there's two seats and, you know, anybody can come. You bring it, you know, the, the, the board will be there, but most people will bring, some people may bring a board or they may bring their own, their own pieces. So we, we're gonna get, we're gonna be prepared for that. That wasn't the one, one of the ones, options that we had, um, listed out. Like we had backgammon, we had Chinese checkers.
Oh, yeah, that's not getting any votes. Chinese checkers, nope.
Sorry, just, just point of what our Dana was in the middle of talking.
Okay, so what was I saying? Okay, yeah, yeah. So what I wanted to say is we had anticipated this. Actually, we, actually, we were surprised that you did the survey, but that's great. I mean, it's great. But anyway, anyway, it's funny because we were sort of on the same path, because we really liked the Chinese, Chinese, um, checkers, but we realized that it wasn't functional. We couldn't, it wouldn't work, but we, it would look great. But we were thinking of, we were gonna do both chess and, um, chess and, um,
Checkers.
Checkers, but we have enough, you know, we're still, you know, we have enough room for another table. So if there's something they really want, we obviously want to embrace that. So that would be great, because we want, we want kids, we want people to be using it. And the way that's set up, so that you know, I don't know if you've gone out there, you may see that the, um, walls look kind of low. They're made so that people, kids will sit on them, you know, teenagers, anyone that's out there, that they're made for that. And we are gonna have some furniture for them to sit on as well. Can I just ask a question? So, so just to clarify, so when you put out the survey, you put dominoes, but there wasn't a specific table that you saw? You just thought that they could play dominoes on the chess and checkers?
No, I apologize. The vendor who does the other types of tables has a dominoes table. So, yeah, so I put that in addition to.
That would be fun.
The other couple, but you can play dominoes on any surface.
You could send us the link.
Sure.
Do you mind doing that?
No, I can do.
That'd be great.
It's on the front page of the website.
We're, I guess our hope is that we're gonna get, we should have a lot of this stuff rolling in in the next couple of months. We really want to get it here for summer.
Yeah, I mean, the concrete, yeah, the concrete tables, we're, I was gonna talk to Beth about the survey results.
Yeah.
Cause we do want to order those right away.
I understand.
And we were in agreement on that, right, so.
All right, thank you. Um, any other questions, comments, Erin?
Yeah, just a quick question, uh, regarding the signage for, for the, you call them not donor plaques, but the signage for the, you know, the donations and thank you. Is there, is that a complex process to figure out where they're gonna go throughout the library?
No, we've already, that's been all planned.
Perfect.
We plan, we worked with, um, our representative, some Megan Bradley, who's been wonderful from Sunshine and is a real expert. So we've worked with her and also Beth, myself and Doug and I think other people. So that's all been, they know exactly where to put them.
Cool.
There's only, there's only one, I think, that, um, that we may, will double check on. So, but that's a good question. We really worked hard on that. That's why it's taken so long. And the forgery was in Wisconsin and so it took a long time to get them all done, but they're finally done. And prior to that, you, if you see the dedication plaque to the library, we worked on that. The Capitol Campaign paid for that as well because there was problems with it initially and, um, we finally just said, please let us do it. So we get it up, so that's up. Can I just say, so I just want to say thank you. Like Dana spent so much time and they, they're personalized, they're amazing. I can't wait for everybody to see them. She worked with local artists, Sarah Bejer, gorgeous. They're just, I can't wait for the unveiling at the, at the party. We'll probably, we'll have to figure that out, because I think we'll have to do it prior to the party. Yeah, I guess we can't like have a little. But anyway, but thank you, Carrie. I appreciate that. It's been a lot of fun. We, we, I think people are really, really gonna be pleased. Yeah, they are.
Yeah, um, the benches that have, are there four benches? Do those get naming rights, too?
Those are, those, yes, they do. There's six of them that were donated.
Oh, excellent. I didn't know that that, that's excellent.
Yeah.
All right, uh, again, thank you, Dana. Um, was anybody able to attend the Friends meeting?
Uh, yes. So if I, yes, um, so, um, yes, um, so I, I will be officially resigning from the Board of the Friends. Um, but I am intending to remain just as active as I have been. Um, I just won't be a voting member of the Board, because I just don't want there to be a conflict of interest. Um, at our most recent, um, meeting, we, um, when I was still a board member before I was elected, um, we did decide on annual meeting. So, um, the Friends Board has asked me to extend the invitation to the, to the director and to the members of the Board and all of the, uh, members of the Friends. In, um, we're gonna have our annual party at the library on Friday, June ninth at six thirty. Uh, pending approval by the select board, we will have wine and cheese. Um, so we're very excited about that, but please come. Even if you're not a member, um, our membership rates or the Friends memberships, you know, rates are dues are very reasonable and you can join, um, you can come to the meeting and join or you can join in advance. So please come and, um, enjoy our beautiful library. Did you say what time that is, Carrie? Six thirty and it's posted, there's an event hosted, co-hosted with the library on, um, the Facebook page. Um, there's also a newsletter. Jackie's gonna be sending out the May newsletter. Um, she's planning to send it out on Friday. Um, we also had the Community Read event. Um, it was Love and Safran, um, hosted by the fabulous Heidi Fowler. And of course, you know, she did a fantastic job. It was a lovely book. Uh, my would highly recommend it to anybody. It's a great discussion. Um, yeah, so, so there'll be, so at the June meeting, it'll be, um, an actual meeting. There'll be, um, the, the next year's board will be elected. So any, you know, so the, that will happen, but it also will be, you know, a celebration as well.
All right, regarding our Friends, um, is there, uh, maybe this, uh, three madam chair to, uh, Beth? Uh, you, uh, currently have a pending date for, to go in front of the select board for a one-day beer and wine license?
So I, I reached out to Cindy Ide, who, um, told me that we need, the Friends need to go the Wednesday before the Tuesday. So, um, so it'll be this coming Wednesday to be on June, Tuesday, June sixth to appear before the board to apply for the one-day wine and beer license. Um, Jackie Dillman is tip certified, so she will be the one submitting the application.
And I, I sent it to her today, so she has the application. Uh, and we also reached out to the town accountant to ask if the town's insurance covers this event or not. Um, and they have, uh, several times now in the past waived the, the license for private parties, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be appreciated.
No, they said you don't need a license. It's private.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they may do that.
Erin?
So Carrie, is, um, so this is after hours? So do we have, um, someone from staff on hand or are we, or, oh, you're gonna be there? Or what would this be in the, um, the large conference room?
We reserve the large conference room.
So you don't have to be there, Beth. We'd love you to be there.
We would love her to be there. We'd love all of you to be there, too. Please come. And we want to celebrate. I mean, lots been going on the last couple of years and Beth's been working very hard, diligently, doing three or four jobs.
So that said, have a lot of groups, uh, this is kind of dovetailing off of what you said, a lot of groups using the after hours.
Yeah, not, not so much. We have, um, a thing booked for June fourth and June eighteenth, so we've got two Sunday events and I'm struggling to get the key card to work. Yeah, but the library's open.
Point of order, can we finish up, uh, just the Friends update?
Yes.
And then we can, um, circle back to.
I think if there's anything else on the Friends, um, I think we are gonna be having, um, a, a book sale in September, um, as well. So there'll be, um, just like last time, a, a couple of week period where we ask for book donations as well. Yeah, I think that's it.
And any other questions?
I have one more question. Uh, regarding membership, um, how many members are the board and how many vacancies will there be, Carrie, with your departure as a board member?
How many, so, um, well, the, there's just me, that's vacating. Um, so everybody who's currently on the board, I think, is interested in returning, except for maybe Nicole, because she gets expected, but. Yes, I'm not sure about Nicole. Um, so, um, so if people are interested in, um, you joining, um, the, the Board of the Friends, you, you please, you reach out to your friends at graftonlibrary.org.
All right.
Um, that would be greatly appreciated. So it's Ellen, Jackie, Marion, Betsy, right now Nicole. Um, so there's, um, there's five of us and I think Dottie, um, Dottie's been like an acting board member, so I think she's gonna join our board. So, so we do have enough members for the board, but we, you know, are always looking for new members to, you know, there's plenty to do, so we always would appreciate any more membership. Um, I, they did also, um, request that I, you continue, you know, kind of, you know, to, to serve. And I would be happy to serve as the liaison to the Friends if, if the, if the Board is, would like me to do that. Um, whether or not, um, you know, or we could have a rotating, I'm planning to attend all the meetings anyway, so, so either way.
So, um, in the past, we have attempted to have a board liaison, so it, you know, seems natural. seems natural, um, where you're going to be going, I, I don't think that it needs to be official where any of the Board Members can go and give an update, um, before we move on, Erin, did you?
Yeah, really just, um, I think the way we intended to have a Board Liaison was more so that the Friends could get to know everybody in the Board as well, right, so, we usually put it up for, for discussion if anybody would like to attend, attend the meeting, um, so certainly, um, you know, it's good to have a liaison, um, who, who goes to the meetings often, and that sounds, that's a great fit, because you have been, been on that Board for a long time, but certainly, like, I'd love to see Roger go, and I'd love to see John go, people who
So I think we could do both, and also, too, um, like, if, like, I might not be able to attend every Friends Board meeting, so if I plan to go to the, all the Friends Boards meetings, and then we rotate, you, other members, um, I could help, you know, you, if the word doesn't, you know, try to help spread the word that the meeting's going, and, and, and just make sure that we have coverage, you know.
I think that's good. Have the Friends had any discussion of the ability to change to a different night of the week, do you know?
Um, we, yeah, it, it's tough, Tuesdays, because I mean, Wednesdays are this, so.
Only once a month, so all of my meetings, except for that one, are now on Wednesday, and I have a commitment on Tuesday, so I had asked if we could, if they would consider pulling the members of the Board to shift to a different night of the week, but I didn't get a response, and I've asked twice.
Yeah, um, it was discussed, it's, Wednesday's tough, um, but, um, but I can bring that back to the, to the Friends Board.
Thank you. Um, Beth, do we still have, um, and do we have a new COVID-19 update, or?
Nope.
All right. Just to throw this out to the Board Members, do we feel that we need to keep the COVID-19 update on the ongoing business for future agendas? We haven't had an update in a while.
I mean, oh, go ahead.
You, go ahead.
Well, I mean, this, it's officially, you know, ended, right, like?
Mm-hmm, it's not an emergency anymore.
No, it's an emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah. Erin?
So, I would like to hear from, from Beth often about any, um, any staff issues regarding, you know, certain issues regarding illness at the Library related to COVID-19, it doesn't have to be its own update anymore, but certainly, um, I don't know where it might fit in the agenda, um, maybe the
She's usually in the Director's Report.
Yeah, the staffing update.
Sure.
Yeah, so we, we did have, I was out on vacation last week, and there was a day that seven people were out sick.
Yeah.
So, it just, spring allergies and colds, it wasn't it related to, as far as I know, pandemic.
Yeah. There is a new, like, COVID wave in China right now.
Yeah, I
Sixty-five billion cases, they said, so.
I would prefer that it stays, even if you say we have nothing to discuss, because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
Also, like, the update I have is that things have changed for staff based on, like, healthcare coverage and what's covered and what isn't, which I don't feel, like, that's not necessarily of interest or relevant to, it's
It would be
Not within our control, for sure, that all of a sudden, some things are not getting covered anymore, like sick timeout for COVID.
I just think it would be good to know if staff have getting sick, and just, you're not supposed to tell us that, if it's an issue
You can tell when I have a staffing
I would like us to know about it, because it, it is a Library issue if we, you know, if we get, if people are getting sick and, and what's, whatnot, so.
I'm, I'm okay combining it with, um, uh, you know, a Director's Update if needed, I don't feel it needs to be its own item, we can always, um, put it back on the agenda if we feel, um, that it needs to be addressed again as its own item, like, as John just mentioned, you know, if it tends to start closing down local businesses again, then I think we, it has to have its own update.
I agree with Erin, combining it, and then it gives us the flexibility if we need to at some point break it out to its own update, but it can be covered in that report.
So, is that how we make the decision? I'm okay with it, I'm just saying that that's how we do it, that's fine, I just, I just think it could, I hate to say, it could come back, so.
Well, well, I, I don't think the discussion is that we are getting rid of it, just instead of having it as two ongoing business items, it, it's just brought up it
Right.
And, and one in the Director's.
Yep.
Any other comments on that? All right, um, so moving on to the walkabout, I know I did a walkabout, I'm not sure if anyone else did also, uh, as far as the walkabout, I'm not going to go over the things with Building Committee that Beth brought up earlier, as far as the, um, doors, uh, the children's room still does not have an emergency exit bar on the door, so if anyone is to exit that door, no alarm sounds, uh, the teen room does have that, so just something to be aware of that, that's still ongoing. The handicap door is fixed, that was out of commission for a little while, um, the librarians themselves, when I walked around, um, all mentioned that the new custodian has been very detail-oriented in the public spaces, um, but it would always be appreciated for more hours, because the non-public spaces are not, um, as clean or getting the support just because they're focusing on the public hours for, um, what they have, and are being allocated to the Library at this time. The 3D printer in the teen space is still not being used, it is something that we, you know, purchased almost two years ago with the Library, um, due to staffing and, um, willingness to kind of be comfortable with the machine, it's still not up and running, so it is in the corner of the baker's space with a sign on it, um, so just for us to know, if that's something that we want utilized, we should probably work on that, John?
Uh, so it was in there, uh, I think, last week sometime, and so I was trying, we still have the, the hood that, um, needs to be put together or assembled, I guess, and so I tried to do that, uh, with, I believe it was Sarah, uh, but we were missing the poles that are meant to, uh, hold it up, so, it's basically like, imagine like a tent, it's like a tent with those, has like these poles that go inside, so, um, because of all the construction that happened, uh, in that room, the stuff got moved around, uh, so we were able to find the hood, just not the poles.
Should be in the office.
We're not able, we, we weren't able to find them, so, um, and also, I mean, you mentioned the staffing issue, Heidi's, uh, out, so I think that's also slowing that process down, but.
Heidi's?
Allison.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Allison, not Heidi.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for, for taking a look at that, um.
So can I just ask one thing on it?
Sure.
So, if, assuming the hood gets put on there, is there anything else that's limiting operation of that unit? Because I agree, it needs to be operational.
Yeah, my understanding from talking to the Librarians several times over the last year is there's just a general, um, sense of being uncomfortable operating the machine, I don't know, um, I know that we have offered training, that that is something that this Board kind of brought to them and offered to them, I know one of our Board Members offered to go in, and, um, Beth, if you have more information, or how we can help kind of get that from out of the closet and operational.
So, I, I know one issue is, um, safety concern, and that there was a remaining piece to print that would take more than a one person's eight-hour shift to sit and watch and keep an eye on the machine and be present in the room, and I suggested we bring in support from people who offered, um, and then
I did print that part.
Okay.
Yeah, so that part, I believe we have everything we need to assemble the hood.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's why I had gone back in there to try and get it assembled.
Yeah, so I would say that if we get, have our additional staffing, then we should be able to take requests per the policy that we drafted, um, to start doing the printing.
So
Yeah, hopefully this summer, but
And at that point, we could change the sign?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, so that, now, when we were gonna, when were we planning hiring that additional staff, could we do it in the summer then, or what were you thinking, Beth?
The vacancy has been posted.
Okay.
The interviewing takes time.
Okay.
We have advertised the position from 2:00 to 6:00 PM during non-school hours, that's not really when we need somebody in that room in the summertime, so we may hold off adding that person until September, and use those hours to fill with temps, so that we have somebody in the room from 10:00 to 9:00 when the whole Library is open, because we'll have traffic full-time in the summer, as opposed to a concentration of teenagers after school. So I'm, I'm guessing it might be till September.
That's what I, that's, that was
I think that, that's a reasonable
That's what I was getting at.
Goal, yes, and when the teen librarian returns from maternity leave, we can communicate the goal and expectation, and she'll, should have the additional staffing and support to be able to have the machine running.
So this is more from Policy Committee, I don't believe we've, um, approved a, a policy for the 3D
That's why I said draft.
Isn't draft?
So
Yes.
Draft policies now need to go to the Union for review, to make sure that there's nothing procedural in there that impacts their job descriptions, before we can get it to legal to be approved, so it could be an issue that this depth of technology is not actually anybody's specific purview, I'm just putting that there.
Yeah.
Didn't the teens request it?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, yeah, it was the
The children's and teen staff requested it, yes.
And we, because we were at one point thinking getting more than one
Yeah.
And the Capitol Campaign paid
It, it could be a solution to relocate it and make it available for all ages, but sort of the whole point of the Maker Space was here's a place where you can come and use this kind of technology, which the teens actually have at the high school, because they have more than one 3D printer
Okay.
Over at the high school, they have access to.
It's involved, it's evolving, it sounds like.
Yeah, I, so, yes, Debbie?
Jonathan, our IT guy, was in, he works down in the Maker Space with the laptops and stuff, and he, another one day, and the 3D printer was running, and we're like, ooh, what are you doing? And it, and we didn't have all the parts for it, and he had to leave, and I was in there with the kids, so we made the two signs that said, if you touch the printer or go near the printer, that's automatic removal for the room, they could not care less that it was on, there was no odor from it, there was no noise from it, it was not these things that we were like, oh my gosh, you know, weren't really, really worried about.
Mm-huh.
Didn't face them at all. So, I mean, that's just another, it's, it's not a barrier to doing it, like, we were concerned about the smell, we were concerned about heat, they, they did not care, they were sitting from here to here from it, and didn't, didn't care that it was on and running.
Okay, that's really helpful to know, thank you. Um, the last thing that I wanted to just bring to the attention, um, is children's room, um, Room 117, which is the study space in the children's room, it is currently full of what appears to be pieces of shelving, um, and some of that I know has been moved to outside, but I would love for us to be able to say that we don't want any of those rooms, those study spaces, used as storage, um, moving forward.
Yeah.
And if that could be taken care of, because that's the only study space in, in that room, in that room, so. And the, the questions in the teen room, they have it on the whiteboard and that, about the games, uh, so the games was when you walked in, it was posted, what game would you be interested in, and then on the whiteboard this week was, you know, what's your favorite candy bar, and those seem to be really engaging, they, they talk about them, and, um, so updating those questions has been really a positive
Yeah.
Thing that I've seen in, in the teen space, but, um, that's all I have about my walkabout, I don't know if anybody has questions, or anyone else did a walkabout?
Uh, just a question on the, um, the, the charging stations for the cars, I, I know what.
They were fixed.
They were fixed.
So they, they pulled them upright, so they're now both upright.
That's good.
And I'm now getting an error that one is not working again, so I just forwarded it to William Blake tonight, and he said, okay, well, let me know what you need to help get them running again, and I think, I, so I don't know what happened to fix them when I was out, if it wasn't a complete job, or if they fixed it and there's still something we need to do on our end, but I'm still hearing that one is not, that one is working and one is not. So, I will have a follow-up next week after Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I know that the presenter at the Apple Tree Arts Ukulele Festival charged his car successfully last Saturday at the Library, and was very grateful and thought the cost was reasonable, so, it worked for him. It is getting used, when, I mean, when they are up and running, people are interested in
It's good they're being used.
Yeah, and I do, so money collected from it goes to general fund, um, and I believe the municipal center is gonna be installing some, in the very near future, if they haven't already put one somewhere around the building, and if they decide that they're not charging, we, we got a grant to fund them, but the grant does allow you to charge for the cost, to recoup the cost of the electricity, but I think if the municipal center to charge, decides not to charge, we should follow suit and offer it at no cost, so it's, it's not that expensive.
I see.
Yeah, because I, we, the Library doesn't benefit and get the money anyway, so, yeah.
Did anybody else have any, um, general Library updates? All right, um, so I have done walkabout for, um, much of the last year, I would love for other trustees to start, um, doing that, so is there somebody who would volunteer to do the walkabout report for June? John? Okay, thank you.
Is there a specific set of things I need to?
Generally, just in checking in with the building, I can talk to you about what I do offline, um.
And we usually pick right, once someone does the inside, or someone does the outside, you don't have to do both.
If we have to.
Yeah, Doug and Karen did it quite, quite often, too.
Well, how frequent is that, like?
Monthly.
So it's, it's once a month that we give an update, um, so one of the Board Members, or, um, if there is a pair of Board Members, try and go, uh, look around the building, especially when the building was kind of newly opened, and, um, just sort of check in, what is we noticing that's not working, or what are people loving, is there something that needs to be brought to the attention, um, the landscaping, when it's nice out, has been, um, something that's brought up, or, you know, the parking lot being cleared in the winter, so those are all kinds of things
So good, bad, good, bad, or indifferent whenever you're, yeah, I mean, in the future, I, I'm, I'm within walking distance, I'm a half mile, I'm always up there, so, um, in some future month, you beat me to the punch, uh, for June, and that's fine, but in any other future month.
We often have two trustees.
Yeah, two trustees, it's good to do it.
Oh, I just opened my, yeah, no, you know, I'll, I'll take notes, seriously, I'm, I'm always in that area, either on foot or driving, it's just, you know, so, and then, while I have your attention, someone did mention to me, may have been, maybe a month ago, and I was remiss in calling it to everyone's attention, someone, a gentleman had mentioned to me, there's some type of metal, um, edging near the main, you know, entrance, um, the accessible entrance, um, that seemed to be loose overhead, has anyone sort of looked overhead?
The new entrance or the old entrance?
No, new entrance, the accessible entrance off the parking lot.
I don't know, I haven't noticed anything.
David Haste, who's been our sort of unofficial resident photographer, said something, emailed me this week about something, and it might have been that.
Yeah, just maybe
Something about flashing.
Is that what the term is?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that seems to describe it accurately, that there was something that was around the perimeter overhead that could have been, um, a safety concern, and, you know, so.
Okay, I had something I wanted, I forgot about, um, and you, Roger, made me think of it, um, we are gonna be moving plants around, and, um, we are gonna be adding plants, and also the idea is, it's good, um, most, most of all the plants are native, it is a good idea for us, even the second year of their growth, to water them, it makes them stronger, so I am, we are gonna need help from some trustees, because it has to be done as, um, on a daily basis, and we do have watering, there are places where you can get the water that, right in the, there's like spigots.
Sort of like at the cemeteries, you can just, there's a
So you'll have to go in and ask for the key.
You have to ask
I will be emailing staff tomorrow morning to tell them where it is, it's in the custodial I will be emailing staff tomorrow morning to tell them where it is. It's in the custodial closet, but it looks like a skate key.
It used to be outside.
Yeah, the skate key is inside.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doug knows a lot about that, but, and we did have some sprinklers, so I'm just, yeah, so I'm just kind of, I may be calling on you for help, because that's something that we, we need to share.
I'm happy to help, Deana. Maybe we can set up some time.
Oh, yeah, once I know what's happening.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think last year you set up, um, you kind of emailed us and, and we tried to do a schedule for a while, so.
Yeah, we can do something like that.
To do again.
Yeah, I think so, I don't really.
Is there any age limit on, like, I, I think of like, um, akin to the Community Harvest Project, they say you have to be 12 and up to volunteer. Is there any restriction on bringing your kid along? For, for the outside or just watering, things like that?
Volunteers have to be 14 and up, and with a parent is okay for younger.
Okay, 14 and up.
Alone, 14 and up.
Because we had boy scouts and girl scouts, they're all ages.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the parents.
It's a public space, so.
Yeah. So the note I have, um, that I got Monday was flashing on the sides of the building, and David will send a photo, and I don't have a photo yet. Um, there's black material that goes under the shingles on the south side of the building, where it meets up with the brick going up on the wall. The flashing doesn't look like it's secured to the building. It's a bad description, and we'll get you a picture. So I don't know if that's the issue.
That's probably the person, I bet.
I'll try to go look at it.
But I'm sure that's, would have.
I think that's who Roger talked to.
Yeah, okay.
Who was it? What's the person's name?
He's the local photographer.
His name is David Hayes.
Okay, that's probably, that sounds accurate, but, I mean, who else would just out of the blue bring that issue up to that detail, right? But whoever brought it up, as long as it's being addressed.
Yeah. I'll read that to him.
Any other updates for the library walkabout before we move on to new business?
I did want to ask one quick question, Beth. It's not about the walkabout. How many, how many hours were we able to get our, um, the administrative assistant or executive administrator, what, whatever we're calling her?
Uh, administrative assistant.
I mean, just curious, because that's a real big win. That's huge, that is huge.
But she'll be moving from 19 hours to 35 hours a week, starting in July. He's a huge help, so.
That's big. Okay, good.
Yeah, and then FY25, it'll be 60 hours a week.
Great, thank you, that's really important. So Beth, you should be able to not have to do three or four jobs at once, I hope.
I hope so. Delegate.
All right, moving on to new business, it is a new year, so we need to vote on a new, um, chairperson and vice chair for the Board of Library Trustees, so. Does anybody have, want to self-recommend or recommend anyone else for those positions?
Yes, I would like to nominate John Babriski for Chair of the Board.
I would second that, too.
John, do you accept that nomination?
I'd rather not. Not that I, not that I wouldn't want to do it, I just, uh, I do have other commitments and things, like scouts and things, so if someone else could take it, I think that would be better.
All right.
So I, I believe you need to decline or?
I guess I will decline then.
Okay.
Then I guess point of order would be that the, the, the motion and the second would need to be withdrawn? A, a, as far as I understand, now that you're.
Sure, then I withdraw my nomination.
I withdraw my second, my seconded.
Do we have anyone that's interested?
I mean, all right, first meeting, right? As if I don't have enough to, to do. I've, I've always been ready, willing and able to serve, even out of the gate, all right? Especially where I have, uh, experience running meetings. I've previously been bylaw review committee chair. Now, three and a half years as accessibility advisory commission chair. I'll actually be finally stepping down as chair from that commission, finally someone will, you know, it's frustrating sometimes being on a committee and, and everyone gets into the groove of, of some of the same folks, uh, you know, taking the lead. Uh, so I'll actually be staying on that committee, but stepping back as chair, so. Just want to let everyone know that I, you know, I, I'm ready, willing and able to, to run meetings, and I think I've missed maybe one meeting in three and a half years as Chair of Accessibility Advisory Commission. While also taking on the, uh, putting on the hat of creating all the agendas and meeting packets. I know that's a side conversation, that's not something we do here, that, but that we should be doing. Um, but I've done that task as well, so I, I've done some heavy lifting. And, um, you know, when called upon, I'm, I'm ready to, to do more lifting, so.
I nominate Roger Trahan as the Chair.
I'll second the nomination. I'm assuming that you accept since you.
I'll, I'll, I'll accept that. I'll accept that, and, and, um, I'll, you'll probably ask for a discussion, and I guess, will that be, usually it's immediately, or will it be the next meeting? It's really up to the, the committee to, um, I mean, the board, to either have that transfer, if it's voted in the affirmative, to have that transfer take place immediately, me resume chair for the rest of the meeting, or, um, you know, we're in the groove and have you finish out this meeting. I just want to.
I, I don't remember what, um.
I think traditionally down the next meeting, right?
Karen was the chair.
Karen is the chair, she's just not here today, yeah.
So when, when Doug abdicated to me, uh, we did, we did this at the very beginning of the meeting, so I took over the meeting immediately.
And now we're well into the meeting. I mean, I would prefer that it would start.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely should continue the meeting, like.
Do we have to do the vice chair at the same time? I mean, or do we vote the chair at first?
We can vote the chair at first.
So I was going to, my second nomination was going to be Doug, um, because he is, uh, finishing his, um, work with the building committee after your great speech the other night. Um, and, but I know you've been our chair for, at least it was eight years prior. So certainly I can understand, but I'd like to nominate you as well.
Yeah, I think I, thank you for nominating me, but I think I would respectfully decline, just from time, a time commitment perspective.
Okay, I withdraw my nomination.
All right, uh, hearing no other discussion and no other nominations, um, can I have a vote for, um, Roger Trahan being the new Board of Library Trustees Chair? Everyone say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I, I don't know if that's unprecedented, first meeting, but, you know, what the heck, right? So, anyway.
Next would be, uh, Vice Chair.
I will nominate John Babriski again.
I'm looking to do it.
Yeah. It, it's really a great leadership opportunity. I think it's, uh, um, something you, you may decide you love and decide you want to commit more time to the board as, as Chair of Vice Chair.
Roger said he doesn't miss meetings, so.
So you won't have to run that.
Your work is easy, John, your work is easy.
Uh, I'll, I'll accept the nomination then.
Yeah, I, I will second it.
Do we have anyone else interested in Vice Chair?
I've done it for two years. All right, hearing no other discussion, um, can we vote on John being Vice Chair? For next year, all in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I guess I have made, I don't know if it's a point of order. Um, as far as the, I know that our, our bylaws, or, or not bylaws, our policy calls for just two roles of Chairperson and, and Vice Chair, and it's probably because we have, um, you, Debbie, as, as, I guess, a scribe. Is that unusual? Like, what happens if someone isn't able to take minutes? Do we just kind of have someone that night do it?
No, the meetings.
Do we?
The meeting's recorded, so the scribe who's a paid staff member, and it's in their union job description.
Oh, okay.
Takes the minutes.
She'll do it.
All right, so there, okay, so there never is a clerk, because there's no need for one. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, um, new business of strategic plan, funding for facilitator.
Can I just make one more comment? Sorry, sorry, I was just going to ask Erin if you were going to be available to support the new, I mean, as myself, I mean, I'm certainly willing to support the new, just, just because you, you know, you're relatively new with the library trustee.
And Erin did email me, uh, and I don't know if he emailed everyone else, I forget, but as far as all the links to the, um, the state library resources, I've already started. Yeah, I, I already started, uh, perusing some of those documents earlier, and I appreciate those links that I wasn't familiar with, so.
And, and we should set up meetings, too. I know it's been a little.
Yes.
And you, you have some under your belt still, but, you know, library tour and order of business.
Absolutely.
Yep, I'll be happy to be a resource.
All right, thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, congratulations to the new Chairperson and Vice Chair, uh, strategic plan, funding for facilitator and volunteer for key stakeholders.
So I'm bringing this very late to our board. Um, we've been operating under a strategic plan that expired in 2020. For those of you who've been around for a little while, you may have remembered that we had the first meeting to run, to, to start our next five-year strategic plan on, um, March 11th or 12th, 2020, and then the library closed down the next Monday.
Yeah.
For months and months and months, and, and then we just, like, updated our action plan every year. So I've done that again this year, and Mass Board said, this is getting a little old, and you really should be working on a new five-year plan. Um, and that is a process, and traditionally the process is you hire a facilitator, because you're not the expert in your own backyard. We get together a list of important community members, um, a member of the staff, a member of the trustees, a member of the friends, a member of Capital Campaign, plus people who are key in the community, who have input and opinion on what direction the library should take over the next five years. The facilitator holds two meetings, one to talk about community strengths and weaknesses in general, and then to funnel that at the next meeting into library roles, so the library has a direction moving forward for a five-year plan. That plan is due October 2023, and it is May.
So, so do we have funding in the budget?
No, it's not a library budget, it's never been funded from the library budget. It's always been funded from state aid. Um, it's usually, like, I think we paid the last person $1,000. Um, they did half of the work. It's up to you if you want me to chase that person down and say, we need you to finish this or start over, or if there was a pandemic, let it go and start fresh, either with them or somebody else. Um, it was $1,000 the last time that we reached out to get a facilitator.
Can you remind us if?
I seem to remember we didn't agree with the last facilitator. Am I remembering that incorrectly? Like, did we like the facilitator?
I liked this.
I could be thinking something different.
I don't know. I mean, I thought you did a good job. I think there was confusion at the meeting for what are we doing? Why are we talking about the community? We're here to talk about the library. But the, the strategic planning process is get all the community members together. It's okay if they talk about Silver Lake and Facebook groups and Greenup Grafton and Holden Farms, and then drill down to what are the things that we like and need in the community? What's within our scope? And what is not? What do other organizations in town do and do well? What's realistic for us to do? And then we pick four to six roles, based on a list of 30 roles that public libraries take on, including preschoolers' door to learning, or are we a, you know, a fine arts center, or are we going to be the, the door to new immigrants? Are we going to be a business center, a homework center? What are the things we want to focus on based on what we know about our community and our community's needs and strengths and weaknesses? So it can be confusing, and if there was dissension, I think it was around that. What are we wasting our time talking about Grafton? We need to talk about just the library, but the library is not a silo and doesn't exist by itself, and we are the most successful when we partner with people in the community. So that's why that, that's the approach, that's the method that everybody uses in public libraries, strategic planning.
How did we pick the facilitator last time? Was it somebody recommended?
I probably recommended, yeah.
So is there, is that something that you would do, or you need someone on the board to?
If someone wants to take it on, to find one, that would be great. Time is very short.
I mean, I'd be glad to, if you give me that person's name, to reach out to that person and.
They may not be doing that.
If they're available, if they're still doing it, if they're available, what their fees would be.
There's a library consultant database somewhere that I can get you a link to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would love to be part of this, this process. Um, I've never been part of developing a strategic plan, but it's something I want to have in my wheelhouse. That said, um, my time is kind of few and far between. Sorry?
It's literally two meetings.
Yeah, two meetings, okay, then sign me up. Love to be a part of it.
Yeah, we, we can't have four trustees at the strategic plan, right? So it has to be three or less. So Doug, Erin.
One. Yeah, you can have one trustee, one Capital Campaign person, one friends member.
What if they're both?
You could send someone to do in both capacities, yeah.
I think.
Well, I don't have to be on that, I, I'm just.
He's just going to find a person.
I, I, right now, we're, we're really trying to finish all our projects. I, I can't devote time to it, but I think, Erin, if you want to, that would be great.
Okay, great.
And I do remember it was, I think we've done it a couple of times.
Twice now.
It was very success, people were really glad to be asked to talk about, to be asked what they wanted, because if, if I understand it, it isn't part of it asking the community, what kind of services do you want the library to have?
Yeah.
So that's really important, and I know people really like that, that they were asked to participate.
There's also a separate meeting with the facilitator and staff, and then there's usually an online survey, too, so it's not just limited to the key stakeholders that you invite. But like, if you decide it's important to get, we, I think last time we invited Jay Cummings, and we invited somebody from Apple Tree Arts and, you know.
It's actually a great time, right? It's, I mean, we've got this new library and new space, it's really exciting. And I would encourage one of the new chairpeople to be on that. As an introduction to the, you know, both what our library strategic plan is, as well as what the community is looking at.
I think that's good.
Yeah.
I think we need to have good representation on that.
Right.
Is there a timeline for finding a facilitator, and if one, if, if we can't find one that is available, um, is there a Plan B?
We just got to do it, I think, right?
How, yeah, the, the deadline's October, so they may be willing to give an extension. I can reach out to Mass Board. Usually what happens is the first meeting is like April, and the next one is June, and then the director spends the summer writing the plan. So I was not on the ball and on top of it to bring it sooner to our attention that we needed to get it done.
Is it October 1st or October 31st?
October 1st. October 1st, and then the action plan is due December 1st every year.
Okay, so obviously getting a facilitator would be the best, um, you know, course of action going forward, but if we can't find one, I do have, um, experience facilitating and writing a strategic plan.
It can't be somebody from Grafton.
Okay, so it has to be outside the.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll find somebody. But yeah, there's lots of people.
If we have to do it ourselves.
You could do it.
If you want to write it after the meeting.
Okay.
Beth, isn't there like a, isn't there like a form that we follow, if I recall? So you kind of, you write towards that form, right? So it's not like you're creating it, it's like you have a structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's plenty of models, too. But the facilitator does not do the writing. They just, like, run the focus groups and help.
Are you going to be writing and who's going to be writing?
I'm the one who has to write it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roger?
All right, um, to Beth, okay, so as far as the strategic plan and how that's recognized, if it is recognized as an official document that, similar to the towns, that they have expiration dates, as you've mentioned, um, in an expired status, do, do we risk not getting grant money because they look at whether we have an active strategic plan?
You, you, that's a good question. You started doing your research. So yes, we are required to have a strategic plan because we've gotten many grants from Mass Board or library commissioners.
Okay.
Um, and because of the pandemic, they haven't held us to the deadline, you know, like I said, it's expired, it's three years overdue. They allowed us to continue rolling over with just an action plan between the pandemic and the new construction project, but when I turned it in in December, they're like, that's a little old. I hear you, we will get you a new one this year.
All right.
I, I think we discussed that, too. I mean, the trustees knew that.
Yeah.
Because we had a lot that we were working on at that point in time, plus we have a new facility.
Yeah.
And now that it's in place, I think we'll be able to, we'll be able to find out more what people really want, because now we've got the, we've got the building that can house, do all these different things, house them.
So are we under a hard deadline? Is that the October date you were?
If we, I would say, if by June we don't have a facilitator and things scheduled, then I would go to MBLC and ask for some flexibility and explain, we still have extenuating circumstances, but, you know, we're about to hire somebody, we've got the dates locked in. Is there any leeway and can you give us a break? And they want us to succeed. They're not going to say no and take away our grant money.
And is this something that?
They'll work with us.
Is this something that requires a contract, or is this loosely organized? Like, what did we do last time? Was there?
Just a letter of agreement and a purchase order.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And there's also, uh, once we, we outline the strategic plan and our action plan and activities, there's no penalty if we don't do anything. You've set out to, you know, actually accomplish everything. It's often very ambitious, and they don't say, oh, you said you were going to add three new newspaper subscriptions, and you didn't, you know, shame on you. That just doesn't happen.
In our action plan, the last action plan was very comprehensive.
We did a lot of things on that plan, right?
Yeah, I was just looking at the Makerspace that we checked off the list.
3D printer running, but people are making stuff in that space, not with a 3D printer, but they are making.
It's a maker's style.
Is that planned online? Is that on the library website?
Yeah.
It's tied on the long, long range, long range plan, and then it's.
Oh, okay, oh, I've already read that document, all right.
There's a very nice color-coded one-page version that.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so again, the last time we paid the facilitator $1,000, that was three years ago, and I have no idea what the going rate is, but I would love a motion to fund a facilitator up to a limit for you to set, um, so that we can start looking for somebody.
Good idea.
I would recommend $1,500, but.
I make a motion that we, um, fund a facilitator for the strategic plan up to, I'm going to say $2,000.
Okay, from state aid.
From state aid.
I, I second that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor of, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
All right, so I'll get a list of consultants to Doug and.
Move forward with that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, funding request of $205 from state aid for Sarah Bannister's MLA membership.
Historically, the town has paid for, um, memberships or dues for staff to be involved in professional organizations. organizations. It's not a requirement for our jobs, but it's absolutely something that keeps us in touch with other libraries and keeps us moving forward. That's one of the items that we zeroed out of our municipal budget, with the understanding that we would come to the board and ask for funding. And I think you paid for my Mass Library Association membership and my ALA membership this fiscal year. Sarah would like for her membership to be paid as well. It's $205 annual expense.
I make a motion to fund the $205 request for Sarah Bannister's MLA membership.
Second.
From state aid.
From state aid.
Second.
All right, hearing your first and second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Erin?
How many librarians would be expected to keep this sort of membership?
Usually, anybody in a management position, which is four people, are invited to have it. Additionally, we have encouraged paralibrarian status for frontline staff, so there's an additional two, who are often interested in joining the Mass Library Association, so they can get a certificate or document that gives them that paralibrarian certification. So, at the moment, it's myself, and Sarah, and Cindy Zariello, and Marilyn Wilcox, who have had memberships in MLA. So, there may be one or two more coming.
So, do we need to renew all of those?
They haven't requested it, so I haven't brought it forward.
Okay, but you may be bringing that forward.
Possibly, yeah, and it would be around the same cost.
Yeah, so do you know how much was zeroed out from the budget?
Total for dues and memberships was around $1,700, I believe. It also included our Digital Commonwealth membership, which I just renewed. I think I paid that out of the gift account, I didn't bring it to the board.
Okay.
Debbie, did you say Marilyn's retiring?
Yes, I hope you all know that Marilyn's retiring. So, she will not be requesting paralibrarian certification level three or four. Her last day is June 30th, and she is hoping that all of you will attend whatever party we end up having in her honor. She's been with us for 19 years. Sometimes she's been full-time, sometimes part-time. At the moment, she's doing 12, but she's there every Friday and Saturday, so that, and Monday night, so that's your opportunity to go see her and thank her for her service.
Friday and Saturday and Mondays?
Friday, all day Friday, all day Sa... So, I think it's afternoons, actually, Friday and Saturday afternoons, and Monday night. So, she won't be moving forward. There's four levels of paralibrarianship, and she was the first person to be interested in it, and take it on, and it's a certification that sadly is not tied at all to races. But, it's a really great thing.
That celebration, that's to be announced, right?
To be announced, we don't have a date yet. It will not be on the 30th. Probably enjoy.
Is this something where we could also say that we would allow up to $2,000 a year for, for these types of memberships?
Yes.
Since that, I feel like that, rather than doing one of these every month, we could just do that once a year? I don't know if that's where you were going with it, Erin.
Nope, that's a good idea.
So, are you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to allow to $2,000 from state aid to be used for MLA memberships.
Can we just say memberships? Because there's ALA and PLA in there.
Is $2,000 enough, then?
I think, yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion to allow up to $2,000 a year from state aid for various professional memberships.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you remind us why it was taken out of the budget?
Because we took everything that we could fund from another source out to pay for more staffing, because we desperately needed more staffing. So, marketing, publicity, dues, travel, programming for the last two years, because we decided that state aid could be used to pay for those things. The intent is always to add it back into the municipal budget at some point. But, again, like, we need more staffing. I'm going to say it at every meeting, we need more staff.
Okay.
Erin?
So, I think as more requests come from state aid, this is more just where my head is, not knowing what that number was, I was surprised that we had so much.
Because we never spend it.
Yeah, and, and that, I mean, we've been banking it for, for, for good reason, and this is why we've been banking it for these sort of requests, that the town isn't, it's not budgeted for. But also, I wasn't present at the, at the last meeting, but did we vote to approve a large chunk of that?
Yes.
So, I think we need to be very cognizant of, of what we decide to, like, in this case, I think it's a great idea, but that's money that will be spent in the future until it's drained out, so we have to earmark certain things that aren't going to be spent, like, here's a bill, let's pay it. No, this is something that, you know, could, could be expended in the course of a year, a year and a half, two years, depending on if these requests come in or not. I don't know how we track that.
Yeah, I guess, how much do we have in state aid funds?
Do you remember the number? It was a lot.
It was over 100.
It was over $100,000. And the, the town and other boards and committees would like us to actually spend the influx that we get every year, and not be sitting on it.
I was just going to say, I, in my, I remember that we've been very cautious, I mean, Beth is really, I mean, if she brings it to us, it's probably, it's really something pretty serious. We've been really careful as far, the way I feel about it, working, being part of the board for the last couple of ye... for a while.
The next...
But, I think it makes sense, and I also, you know, we're going to vote whether, for Beth to go to the annual AL, ALL, ALA meeting, she really needs to go to that. I mean, that's just, it's a given, so I'm just saying, th... these are very important.
So, before we move on to the ALA conference, there was a...
Oh, just one thing.
Any more discussion?
I, I just looked up the MBLC state aid allotments, and it looks like Grafton, at least this year, got $42,000 something.
It used to be like $15,000.
Yeah, it was, it was 22,000, no, it was $22,000 a year when I started 10 years ago. And with the pandemic, one of the, you know, about those legislative breakfasts that people go to, and I'm always saying, "Advocate to your legislators for more money." So, those are the, the meetings where you get to talk to your legislators and tell them to fund state aid, and there was like a 40% increase during the pandemic
Wow.
in state aid to public libraries in Massachusetts. So, that's why all of a sudden, we had a big jump.
Yeah.
And hopefully, that will continue, if our legislators continue to fund the public library state aid line. But, that's why we're at $42,000 a year in two allotments now. So, we're now getting, every six months, the amount we used to get 10 years ago for the whole year. And we do tend to bank it, and I tend not to bring requests unless we, yeah, it feels vital, so.
And you just say what the state aid is based upon, so people understand that?
Sure, so there's money that gets taken out of your Massachusetts taxes, that goes to the government, and then the Massachusetts government allocates it to many, many different accounts, to fix your roads and pay for your schools, and also to fund your public libraries. About 1.8% of the revenue in the state is allotted back to public, to libraries in general, and then they have, I think, seven different funds. They give money to the Braille Talking Books, Swister Talking Book Library, and Braille Materials. They give money to the Massachusetts Center for the Book, out in the middle of, I think it's like Northampton, where they celebrate and collect things by local authors and put on tons of programs. They give money to the local networks, like CWires, to help fund their infrastructure and staffing. They pay Mass Board of Library Commissioners to advocate and lobby at the state level for library funding. They do some grant work, and then they do the state aid funding to public libraries. And then, we get three different grants. One is based on the size of our municipality. One is to supplement, like, basically our, our operational expenses. It's an equalization grant, to make sure that everybody's getting funded. And then we get an additional grant for people from out of town who come to the Grafton Public Library, and guess what? Since we renovated, like, everybody from all around town is coming by to check out our new building. So, that number, which was down during the pandemic, or that, that specific grant amount was down during the pandemic, because we, we were closed, and we didn't have people coming in, is now going back up, because we're getting residents from all different bar, uh, barcodes, yeah, zip codes, libraries all the time, that's all I think about.
So, those three components...
Our state aid.
Became the $42,000, so it's kind of like our bonus.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. And then that money is given into electronic payments to accounting, and then they send me a note and go, "How are we allotting this?" And I say, "Here's my state aid letter, here's the three grants." And then this board gets to steward that money, so I don't spend it without coming to you and saying, "Can we, can you pay this? Can we take this out of state aid?" So that you're voting and stewarding that money. We did, at the last meeting, agree to commit $109,000, up to $109,000, to help pay off the COOPLA. And one thing that I could go in and do tomorrow is write a purchase order for that amount to the state aid accounts, to hold that money, and set it aside and prevent it from being spent, when I bring in other requests.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion.
There's two.
So, do I withdraw my motion for the...
I think so.
So, I withdraw?
Yeah, you need to withdraw, and then we need to vote on the motion that was first and seconded, so if you want to...
I withdraw my motion to fund $205 for, from state aid for MLA, membership for Sarah Bannister.
Okay, and now we have a first and second motion to fund up to $2,000 a year from state aid for professional memberships. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Can I say one more thing about state aid? I'll talk quick. We only get that money by maintaining our library certifications, by turning in a statistical report every July, which I've already started working on, by turning in a financial report every October, by maintaining the hours that we said we'd be open, which is 60 hours per week, by spending 13% of our budget, the municipal budget, on educational materials for the public, which is books, magazines, globes, maps, databases, sewing machines, anything that the public can use, and by having a certified library director. So, as long as we, and as long as we're compliant and all that, we get our state aid money. And then as long as we have our long-range or strategic plan, we get grant money. We also need the, the state aid qualifications to maintain our grant money. So, that means we need to meet our state aid requirements for the next 20 years, because of the building grant that we got to fund the new building. We're five years in, don't panic. We are actually five years in, so 15 more years.
Thank you for kind of clarifying and explaining that a little bit.
2030. You're welcome.
Moving on to the next, the funding request for a library director to attend the ALA Annual Conference from June 22nd to the 27th of this year. I haven't seen any amount or estimates tied to that.
So, I sent just the, the rates and registration. I believe it is too late for early bird. So, the conference registration is $260. I did price flights and hotels, and the allotted per diem from the travel policy for Town of Grafton, and the IRS website, where they have what the recommended rates are, and would like to request up to $2,000 to cover travel, meals, hotel and registration.
Beth, where is it being held?
So, it's being held in Chicago, Illinois.
Oh, nice, okay. Now, we understand why, June 23rd doesn't work.
Yeah, I haven't, so I haven't been to a library conference in 12 years.
You need to go.
I feel like I do, I would like to go, I need to go. The last time one came up that I was interested in, it was in Las Vegas, and I was like, "I'm not even going to ask Mr. McInerney if I can go to Las Vegas for five days on the town's dime." And then he said, "Why aren't you going to that? You need to go to that." I was like, "Oh, it's too late, so..."
Yeah, so...
So, there are...
Professional development.
...$2,000, is there a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Just a question, I mean, really just a comment, I think it's fantastic that they're having it in Chicago, because Chicago is one of the first cities that was fine-free, and it was like $7 million they were losing in revenue by going fine-free. I think it's fantastic that, that that's the locational library conference.
Do you know why it's the locational library conference?
No.
American Library Association is based there, so the conference is there every other year.
But, I like Chicago for that reason.
It's a great town.
Plus, they have great steak in Chicago. Not to offend any vegans or vegetarians, but, no, it is a great city as well.
Have you, sorry, I have to raise my... Are we, have you checked like hotels, and like, $2,000 might not be enough?
I was going to say, it might not be enough.
If you're going to be there for like five days.
$2,000, $3,000?
So, the con, the conference hotels range $230 to $275 per night.
And how, it's three available, or how many nights?
I think it's going to be four, yeah.
It's four nights?
Yeah. I might stay an extra day and pay for it.
I think I probably need more than that, I think like...
And are we funding your, sorry?
Sorry, go ahead.
There's no travel, yeah, there's really...
Are we funding your meals?
55, I have up to $55 a day for Town of Grafton.
Everything, okay.
No alcohol, just the food. Okay.
Sorry. And the flight, right?
And the flight. Southwest has a deal right now, so if you say yes tonight, I will go buy my airfare for like 100 bucks each way. I get a deal.
What are you forgetting?
Southwest, to Midway.
Yeah, I think we definitely should.
Yeah, it's trying to make sure we flew to Florida.
I'll make a motion.
And it, I mean, I have to leave at 5:00 AM, but it's no stop, no stops.
I like, I like to make a motion that we fund for the library director to attend the ALA Annual Conference in Chicago, and I would like to say up to 4,000.
All right, I won't spend it all.
I was going to say 3,500, if you think that's too much. If it's 400 a night, four times four is...
No.
No?
It's like 260 a night for the whole...
All right, well, let me redo that. I would like to...
I won't spend it all if you give me a limit.
I motion to fund for the library director to attend the AL Annual Conference in June, and I would, I'd like to say up to 3,500, to include all expenses.
Does that include registration?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Which is two sixty, so the registration is pretty cheap. I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor for funding up to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Aye.
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 I will be back in time for a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
So will you need to submit receipts to the.
I will, so I will, now that I have your approval and funding, I will go to Evan and give him a request that he will need to approve. And if he says no, there's no travel, I don't care who's paying for it, then that will be the end of it. And if he says yes, he'll say, did you look at the travel policy? And make sure that all the accommodations and travel meets the budget that's laid out in that policy, which is always just like, get the best price.
Yep.
Yeah.
So wait till you talk to Evan. Buy your flights. All right, Erin, do you have a policy update for us? And also, I don't know if you could include how the union is affecting any policy work that you guys are doing?
Sure, I can't speak to that directly, but I might ask Beth to chime in as a member of the Policy Committee. But certainly, the Policy Committee's been very productive. We've brought a few policies already for vote over the past year. But sometimes it takes a while because we go through a few iterations. You know, we change our minds month to month, you know. What we're, what we're doing generally is when we're developing new policy, we find that really a lot of this is procedural, so we're trying to pull out things that are procedural from our, the new policies that we're writing, and then some of the older policies that we're reviewing and bringing back to this board to then, then vote on. Again, then every time we do a revision, it has to go back to legal. Do you want to speak to the, the union part of that?
Sure, I'll just say that we made a update to our inclement weather policy, where we took out all the procedural things and, and things like, you have, you have to call and listen to the message, and the director will have updated the phone message to say the library's closed. Our software, our system won't allow us to do that anymore. So now we had to change to a phone tree. And that was a procedural change, so union representation told me that we couldn't have anything in policy that was a procedure change that affected staff jobs. No changes in job duties or. So now every policy has to go to the union to review to make sure that there aren't things that are changing people's job duties before we can finalize it and move on to legal.
Is that retroactive? Because we've done.
I don't think so, I think it's gonna be going forward, because I said, like I, I did, I've asked for a staff member to sit in on that meeting, and no one has been willing, even with pay. We've given out policies and not received feedback. The meetings are public and they're able to attend or send feedback, and they have not. So it's hard after we've done all the work to finalize it to then hear that we should have done something differently. So going forward, that's the procedure that we will be following. So they do currently have two drafts, I believe it's the art display and.
The food and kitchen?
Yeah, the art display policy and the food and kitchen, food, beverage and kitchen policy to look at, to make sure that there isn't anything in there that is adding a new job duty that they've never done before, because that's cause for either more pay or grievance. So once the union has looked at and voted that they can live with that policy, then we can bring it to legal, or we will make changes.
So is there a time on it, like?
Nope.
So, okay, so that's.
It's frustrating. So who would make that change? Is that something that our Policy Committee can do and submit to the union that they would then agree?
So that's what I've done.
To sometime then?
Yeah.
And they have yet to respond to that?
They have yet to respond to, twice now, to my request to review and give feedback on the two policies that we approved ourselves to, to move on in May, April?
The, the May, I think we were ready to bring these back to legal to then come to the board for vote.
But there's now this interim step.
Correct.
Sorry, Doug and then Roger.
Does the Policy Committee have access to the job descriptions so they can read those? Or?
It's a good question.
Or does the, does the town lawyer have access so that she could at least catch some of that stuff?
I don't know that the town lawyer, like there's a, there's a union person in the town who maybe would look at it. I don't know if the town legal would look at job descriptions, and I don't know if those are. I mean, everything we do feels like public record, so I don't know why job descriptions wouldn't be as well, but I would want to check with Evan. Like, I can tell you that there is nobody whose duty is to take in art display and bulletin board requests. And now we have a policy saying that there is a staff member who will coordinate gallery space for artists who want to display their policy, their, their paintings and photographs. So it's gotta get put into a job description, and then if it's a change that will take up a lot of time, then somebody would have to be compensated for that. Yeah, which is very fair.
Yeah.
So.
That's true.
Roger.
All right, and to Erin, so is it Ginny Kramer or is it Labor Council through Jimmy, Ginny?
I, we usually bring everything to Ginny for a policy review. She tends to, we tend to write good policy, and she tends to just have some wordsmithing.
All right.
Or she'll change, you know, not prohibited to not allowed, those kinds of.
I was almost mid-sneeze, but then. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so then I don't know if, if we brought like job descriptions and policy, if she would need to farm it out, or if whoever Evan uses for union, because he has his own union legal.
And then, then they, they, that's another bill, like a legal bill that then comes out of the, our budget?
We don't get charged for legal, I just let them know when I have to. She has office hours twice a month, so I always try and get in on office hours. I'll send an email, here's things to review, let's meet to talk about it, and make sure he has a heads up.
Can I ask a question? So how often, like, does the union have regular meetings? So like, do you know when the next meeting is?
I do not, no, they've had two or three. We haven't started union negotiation yet, so they signed their union contract last June. And I think very, people have been out, so it's been a little bit slower than we would have liked because one of the stewards was out on leave. So they haven't been able to work together with their union to start to draft their contract so they can bring it to myself and town administration.
Okay.
Long process.
Thank you for that. Erin, John, is there anything else for policy that we should be aware of?
Sure. So we write minutes as part of, meeting is, they're public meetings. So certainly, I'd like you to check out the minutes, but I have an abridged version. Like Beth mentioned, we looked at the art display policy a couple of times. This one took a long time for us to write because we felt that, you know, maybe adding to the staff's duties, and it's good that the, the, the union is taking a look at that to make sure that this is something we can do. You know, I hope it's not gonna be a non-starter because we worked really hard on this and we think it'd be a great benefit for our library. There were some things that were procedural in there, we pulled out, and then we were gonna put measurements of the different art display areas where artists could, could put their, you know, art. But we felt that that could be just be an addendum, like we, that's, can be something to change. So those are the sort of things, like we want policy that to come to the board that is just really kind of voted on, on once. And, you know, so anything that's really kind of procedural or things like measurements, things like that, we're trying to pull out. So that one, you know, I hope the, the union agrees that it's something that, you know, is, is within our staff current job description to work on. The kitchen and food policy, so it's, I'm not gonna say community kitchen, but I just did. Not saying it right, but essentially, it doesn't follow the same rules as a community kitchen, so.
Catering kitchen.
Are you talking about the commercial kitchen that's in the community room?
It's a catering.
I like that.
It's really called.
I like the way you say things.
Andy called it commercial.
Yeah. Okay, the commercial kitchen. So, so really just trying to define how we expect it to be used. You know, I think the policy just needed a bit of clarification, so we ran it through one, one last iteration, and, and we're gonna add in some checklists and stuff as an addendum to make sure that people are properly cleaning up and taking care of that space if, once we have this policy. I think we're still waiting on locks for some things, not sure yet.
I believe that's still, along with the doors and building committee, the, the locks, and then they're not actually going into the floor.
So there's, there's cabinetry in the community kitchen, in the presentation area, in the children's program room where the public is, in the teen maker space, and in the friends corner, where cabinets and drawers were installed with no locks. And should we want to store things that we don't want the public to take, like sharing paws? Or paper, in the Tennessee Conference Room too, or pearler beads, or scissors, or, you know, first aid kit supplies, like those really need to be locked, and they were not designed with locks. So we're still looking for some kind of a solution. So that's the locks that Erin is talking about.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we have new business. We intend to review the language of the material selection policy, you know, really kind of due to the scrutiny surrounding, you know, library, library materials and book selection. So this is something we wanna, we're all, our homework is to really dig through it and really understand it and, and come to the table with some changes. It was on our agenda for the last meeting, but we needed some time to review that. So that one's currently inactive policy, you're free to take a look at it yourselves and, and bring feedback to the Policy Committee, we'd love to hear it. So we're gonna review that at the next meeting. The fine-free library policy was written during the pandemic, so we really kind of want to make it more permanent. So it's gonna have, you know, what a lot of our policies have as a, as a proper, you know, introduction and remove some of the, the language about the pandemic. So we're gonna continue to work on that. We're also reviewing, we reviewed the current dates of when policies were last reviewed because a lot of the policies, I think, that were written before the, the new library was, was built need to be looked at anyways because we found a lot of, like, major changes with the parking policy. I mean, that's gone through several iterations, so that's kind of been our focus is to kind of work backwards, you know, as, as a way to prioritize what we're taking a look at. One of the last things is we removed the response to accident policy from the site as it was really not, not a policy, but more procedural. You know, so those are the sort of things that, you know, we're continuing to take a look at.
So, so if it's removed from being a policy and it's procedural, is it a different place that that's documented?
I mean, it's really with.
Probably staff procedure.
Staff procedure.
It's just as long as it's covered somewhere, you know?
Yeah, it's part of our procedure, if, if somebody gets a paper cut or, and we dispense a Band-Aid, like I want an incident report.
Okay.
Whether it's a staff member or patron, yeah. And I think there was a little bit about like, if somebody falls down and we offer to call them an ambulance and they deny it, and we think that they really need an ambulance, we're gonna call an ambulance.
Right.
I'm sorry, one other thing, I was looking for the volunteer policy.
Doesn't exist.
And doesn't exist, so can we, I know you have a list of things, but can we add that to the list? Because I think that would be a helpful one to have.
Yep.
Yeah, it's on the list and we have a draft, we just haven't gotten to it.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's not published on the library website, okay.
Yeah, we haven't had it on our agenda yet to review that.
Okay.
Didn't see her. Program policy.
Did he have to say? No, I had a question regarding, and to Beth, as far as anytime there's an incident, do the, have the trustees been notified or kept updated on types of incidents, even if names are redacted, especially minors?
So that's a good question. So my, my habit had been to send it to Evan and William in the town administrator's office and to the board chairs, and then let them further disseminate if needed. And then staff said that they realized that I was sending them with people's contact information, and would I stop doing that?
Okay.
So I said, yes, so what we do is they create a version that's in Word, they're supposed to email me and tell me to look in our incident report folder, and then to create a redacted PDF that I send, again, just to those four people, but I think that I've started or intended to start sending them to the whole board so that you are aware of what was happening. So it's a lot of behavioral stuff, it's, they've been much less frequent because we've been able to have people correct behavior that, and not have it escalate to getting them asked to leave the library, but there's a lot of, you've been disruptive or been disrespectful, so you've gotta go. We also write incident reports when we have an unattended child. You know, mom might have brought the toddler to the bathroom and left the five-year-old sitting by the puzzles, and the five-year-old looks up and mom is gone. So we need to reconnect the family and give them a copy of the unattended child policy. So those are the kinds of things that we're having incidents written about.
Yeah, I believe when, when I, I was Chair of the Board, Beth was including incident reports to the, to the town administrator and the Chair of this, this board. So if that needs to extend out further, I'm certainly willing to hear that, but.
It, it had been extended out to, I, I had been included on that, so the Chair and the Vice Chair as well as the town administrator for about the last year. I would say about once a week if there has been, you know, anything that has been recorded, we kind of get a consolidated email with all of those reports. And then if there is nothing, then we just don't get an email. But that's, that's how it's been kind of disseminated to us the last few months. And it's nice to just kind of have it all, all together.
It does go to all staff too, because sometimes we need, we need to know like, oh, so-and-so was asked to leave, so we need to reconnect with them and go over the code of conduct and welcome them back to the library. Or so-and-so has been asked to leave for a certain period of time, so if they are back, they need to be asked, and maybe that time is extended, or maybe we need to now issue a no trespass. So staff are in the loop, but yeah, if everybody wants to read them, I'll send them out. Everybody.
And it looks like your next policy subcommittee is June seventh at 7:00 PM at the Grafton Public Library?
Yes.
All right. Anything else before we move on to the Director's Report?
Debbie, John?
Debbie, John?
The current members are Beth, myself, Debbie and John.
All right. Thank you for that. Beth, could you give us your Director's Report?
It didn't load and it's nine o'clock, so I think we just have to go home. We were open twenty-one days in April, we had six thousand three hundred and eighty-five visitors. We had one closure because of inclement weather, I think at the beginning of the month. We delayed once for staff training. We did sixty programs, the, the whiteboard is actually a passive program, so that's the question of the week in the teen space. Over nine hundred attendees participated in all the various programs that we offered. Our meeting rooms had a hundred and forty-nine reservations and served eight hundred and thirty-eight participants. See, they're attending big group meetings, like what happened in April, I don't know, the Metro West Board of Building Officials met, Girl Scouts used the space, Boy Scouts used the space. There's a lot of private tutoring sessions, there's a lot of people coming to the library for telework, or just they, they book a meeting room so they can have a private telephone call for an interview or something like that. So a hundred, a hundred and fifty meetings for over eight hundred people. Only two no-shows, which is great. We had an additional forty-seven meeting room uses for staff use, so that might have been everything from, we did interviews for new staff, calling somebody into a meeting, photography, that sort of thing, testing technology in a space. One of our big programs was a clock scavenger hunt that I worked on with Willard House and Clock Museum. They donated a mantle clock to somebody who would answer ten questions looking for the number of clocks in various spaces in the library, and a brother and sister tag teamed it and won. So we're working on a photo up where we can present it to them and get a picture with people from Willard House in front of our, on permanent loan grandfather clock up in the historic reading room, so that's coming very soon. We had the first of our Grafton Cultural Council grant programs on 4/20 with Eric the Plant Guy, who did Let's Get Growing on medical marijuana. Seventeen people attended, it was very well received, but I did write an incident report, I think, for the one complaint that we got that somebody couldn't believe that grant money was being used to fund such a program, and was quite upset. And we forwarded that on to the local cultural council, and they were gonna address it at their next meeting. We did bill it as an educational and science program. And the people, the people who attended, again, they were very interested, and they wanted them to come back and do more programming. I went to lots of meetings, construction team, building committee, policy committee, town department head meeting, I had no idea pickleball was such a big thing in this town, but apparently it is, and people have very strong feelings about pickleball. That's what I learned about at a department head meeting. I did meet with legal mostly to make sure that we had everything we needed for the Mass Historical Commission's Preservation Grant Round, which we submitted an incomplete application in March. They reviewed it and then gave us an additional thirty days to get in all the other missing pieces, and we successfully did give them everything that was missing. Thank you so much to David L. King Architect, and William Blake, who is very supportive, and Ginny Kramer, who also helped so that we could turn in a complete package. They will be notifying of awards in June, so fingers crossed, it was a good application that the funding made sense, that our contribution was, offer of contribution was well-received, and we will get that money. And then we'll work with CPC to see if we can get our a hundred and nine thousand dollars that we committed reduced because it does qualify as a community preservation project as well. So that took up a lot of time in April, it was over two hundred pages of grant material that we ended up submitting.
Thank you, Beth, for doing that.
It's a lot of work. But it really, really needs to be done, and I don't want anyone to be under a misconception that because we just spent sixteen point six million dollars on our beautiful new library that we don't have to think about it for five years or twenty years or a hundred years.
It's wood.
It's wood, it's historic, it's a building, and it's a facility, and it's gonna have ongoing costs and maintenance. And we will be looking at, what, what can we do so that we don't have to spend a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars every twenty years to address?
It's preservation, it's not maintenance.
Preservation, yes.
And I just want to add, I forgot to say that the Capitol Campaign did on pace the estimate, well, the estimate that had to be done to determine what work was involved for the COOPLA and also paying for the supervision of the work when it's done. So that was like twenty thousand.
Thank you. It's really helpful. Incident reports, we had eleven incident reports in April, only two, I think two were in minor injuries. I, I'm very paranoid, I'm like, really, if you get a paper cutter, give somebody a Band-Aid, I want, I want to know in case something goes wrong in the future, and we could document it. Thirteen instances of low coverage where we had to close a department or pull somebody from a desk or call in a temp. That sounds low, I'm always thinking that staff didn't, you know, fill in my form all the times that we had to have people cover. I myself was in the teen room a lot and covering the borrower services desk as well, which I really truly love to do, like I had actual reference questions. But it is probably not the best use of your paying of me, for me to be on a public service desk, unfortunately. I did train new temps and provide library orientation to them and teen room-specific training, reviewing and submitting payroll and bills, meeting room usage approvals, website, social media updates. It's what I do in my day-to-day. We did get our second state aid reimbursement, so forty-two thousand dollars for this year. Debbie did lots of social media things and is super amazing. Eileen paid all our bills on time. We do have five new staff members, Katie Millet, Betsy Perry, Shannon Fielan, Greta Schoenberg, and Jessica Young have joined us.
Can I just interject? I would love to meet them at the trustee board meeting, that would be fantastic.
That would be great, yeah, we'll see what we can do to get them here. Only one staff member reported professional development, Sarah Slocum watched webinars on dealing with ornery teens. She's been doing a really great job building relationships in our teen room and preventing incidents from escalating to the point of having to kick out kids while still being firm and consistent, and nope, okay, gave you the warning, you gotta go. So I do want to just take a minute to acknowledge her growth in the last six months, yes. Very proud of her.
Thank you, Beth, for telling us.
Yeah, talked about budget, talked about the grant. We have an issue with damage that I think is not intentional, but is happening. We had to, I called Worcester Elevator for emergency repairs because it looked like somebody was doing hardcore in our elevator on the handles, the grab bars that are around the inside of the elevator. It would only, it would take somebody of, of significant weight standing and pushing on those to have them detached from the wall. There's no elevator in there, there's no staffing always right in that area. So there's no way to say who might have done that, but it cost us three hundred and forty dollars to have Worcester Elevator come and repair it. We had to remove multiple changing tables in public restrooms because same thing, somebody of more significant weight than the forty-pound limit sat or stepped on and broke the hinges for the changing table, so we've now removed them from two restrooms, and we now only have one in the gender-neutral bathroom and one in the children's room. And if I need to replace them, I get, like, I didn't budget for it, so that would be something I would be coming to the board if we decide we want to have them again in more bathrooms. But like, there's no way to get, you know, recompensation for damage that's been done. Again, I don't think anyone's being malicious, but people are playing around in spaces where there are not eyeballs on them and causing damage to the building. And it's an ongoing problem. And I don't know what to do about it.
Yeah.
Did you say in the elevator they were standing on it?
That's the only way that they could have broken those grab bar handles, for somebody to be like jumping up and standing on the bars.
Designed to hold a lot of weight.
Yeah. Yeah. And all three of them, one was, came completely off in my hand. The photographer pointed it out to me that it was loose, and I, oh, just put this away in the custodial closet for now and let me call for repair.
May I just make a comment? So we never had a, a, an elevator at the, at the old library, we had the Lula, right? And nobody was allowed in there, really, just for wheelchair access, and they brought books up and down.
We weren't even allowed to do that, it was technically only for wheelchairs, not for strollers, not for book trucks.
So, I mean, I know it's, it's a public elevator, but I don't know if we could talk about maybe a elevator policy, you know, that really, if you, if you.
I was thinking the same thing.
If you had a, a need.
But how are you gonna?
You can't enforce it.
I know.
The where it's located, like, you, the front reception desk cannot see that elevator because it's right across from the staircase.
The where it's located, like, you, he, the front reception desk cannot see that elevator because it's right across from the staircase.
Just makes, it just seems like it should, my kids wanna go in it, I'm like, no, use the stairs, you know? That's what I feel like.
Yeah, but there's nobody there for us.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe a sign or something.
Yeah, a sign. Are we allowed to do that?
I've heard a lot about passive signage, um, as, as a deterrent, because if people are told not to do something, then they know that, um, at least they've been told by a sign or by a person. Um, because we know we're, we're watching. We know about what's going on here. This is used for, you know, just I don't know how, how you'd write it, but, you know, I, that's been a recommendation, at least for like, uh, the teen room. We were talking a lot about, you know, expected behavior in the teen room, and really just, just, I think it was, um, who joined our, our policy committee, um,
Oh, uh.
From the disability commission.
Kristi.
Yeah, she had great feedback on, on, on that, um, when we were going through that for the teen room, it's just passive signage. You know, it's not a policy and it's not saying you, you're restricted from doing this, it's just passive signage, so. I don't know what, what we could come up with, but just a thought. Same thing in the bathrooms.
Yeah, not for, well, even putting a label with the weight limit, so, cause when it's closed, you don't know. If, if you pull it down, you can see that it says, recommended for forty pounds and under. And moms, you know, moms and dads know, people are changing their babies, know, don't put a sixty-pound five-year-old on there, but.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
Just say only for children to be diapered or whatever.
Yeah, sure, right.
Yeah. Um, I talked about HVAC. We had Renad come in. Thank you for covering their bill, which their billing cycle was just off from our contract, and we're now caught up, and I appreciate that money. Um, I have to let you know that the, the library is actually very dirty, and I'm now going around and cleaning and sanitizing doors, windows, dusting handrails, because it's just not getting taken care of. We are still down a custodian. We are owed thirty-five hours a week. We're getting ten to fifteen right now. And the hiring process is just taking a long time, and I appreciate everything truly that the building department does, but it continues to just not be enough. Um, and maybe we need to think about just hiring a cleaning company to keep it clean, cause it's not happening.
Is there a projected time when this person's gonna be hired?
Nope, soon. They're in process.
Have, have, um.
The new guy's great, but it's too, it's just too much. It was too much for two thirty, two people working thirty-five hours total to keep it clean, because it's a big building.
Who can we speak to, um, from facilities?
Who can we talk to, Beth?
I don't know. Building Department, but they, they can only allocate the staff they have, you know? And there's other needs, that's the thing, like, it's outsourced.
With the cleaning service, like, do we have to go through them to hire a cleaning service, or does?
No, we can just hire a cleaning service.
If we hired a cleaning service, that would be something we, the board would have to decide to pay.
I have a question. I, maybe I misunderstood. Are they trying to hire
Yes.
A custodian, and how many hours would that be?
They're hiring a thirty-five hour person to replace Paul Farrar, who moved to council.
For, for our facility, for the library?
I believe that it's split.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a building services custodian
Okay.
Who gets allocated, hours get allocated to the library, and it's supposed to be up to, up to thirty-five a week. And in the past, it was two people coming to total the thirty-five hours.
Then was thirty-five hours enough?
No.
What do you need? Do it, can we estimate that?
Yes, when we went before town meeting, and I said, no new staffing except custodial. I asked for custodial coverage all sixty hours that the building was open, plus time to clean. I need two thirty-five hour people to dedicate seventy hours a week. In addition to cleaning, they should be the ones opening and closing the doors that divide the community room and setting up chairs. I pinched my finger this week. Um, last week, trying to cl- open and close the partitions as careful as I was being, and I hurt my back last week, yesterday, trying to close and open those very heavy not automated doors.
We called maintenance to come over today from
To reopen it.
Center. The kids had put notebook paper in the toilet and stuff, and by flushing it down, and it was, and they were, they were not happy about coming over cause they, they have to leave over here.
And, and, well, and they're short-staffed right now too, so. Yeah.
So you want someone to be on hand for all sixty hours of the
We need seventy hours of custodial coverage.
Seventy.
Seventy, because they need to vacuum when the library is closed to the public, either before we open or after we open.
Can you estimate what the salary would be for that?
I've budgeted out twice and it's gotten cut from my budget. But it's, it's uni- it's whatever the union rate is for municipal custodian.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a range.
I would love to see, um.
That could be sent to us. I, again, like to us if we're gonna consider possibly funding it.
Um, I would love to see, uh, like a punch list of what's, what the expectations are, if one hasn't been generated.
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah.
I need to update it for the new building, I think.
I think that would be a good idea, because if you're noticing things, like, I, I hate, this is my own pet peeve, uh, cause I, I work in I T, and people get irate about problems they're having, but they never tell me about it. And I said, I get so upset with that. I'm like, you need to tell us. Oh, I've been dealing with this for months, like, why haven't you mentioned it? You know what I mean? So, and this is not to criticize anything that, that we're doing, but certainly it, um, if, if we find that the window sills or windows are dirty, or there's certain things that you're doing that's not part of your job description, certainly, you know, I think we should document them and let them know what the expectation is. If, if they have a finite amount of hours, eighteen hours, right? They can, they can do, you know, eighteen hours of work this week, and then, you know, s- six hours doing, you know, they can, they can plan ahead to do certain tasks, because, you know, I think some tasks can be done every, every two weeks or every three weeks or so.
But sanitizing doors and handrails, that was actually a COVID expectation, that I had to sign a piece of paper that we were doing that, that I finally just took down from the window.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, so what do you have now? Ten hours?
It's ten to fifteen, yeah.
Per, per week?
Per week. Before, it was two people coming for up to fifteen hours, and then somebody else returning for two hours a day in the afternoons to do like sanitizing. And like, my office wouldn't get cleaned or vacuumed, um, for two weeks, because it wasn't public space. Um, I would go away on vacation and come back in a week and my trash is still there. There's dust bunnies in the children's workroom, and this is why we need a walkabout, and everybody to, to volunteer to do walkabouts every single month, and we haven't also had consistent trustee participation in walkabouts, so.
We need to get.
We need, yeah, it's really, cause we don't, I don't see everything.
Uh, John and then Debbie.
Uh, is it a, would it be a issue with the unions if we're trying to hire a separate, like, cleaning service or something to do the union, essentially the union job?
That's a good question. Cause if we had a Roomba.
Ask the librarians to clean because it's not part of their, so, uh, the shelves were very noticeably dusty. And, um, after, uh, not this past walkabout, but the one before. And so to show that there was like an investment from us, I actually went in and I went in and I, yeah, and I scrubbed the walls and the bookcases and all of that to just show them that we, you know, the librarians that we could saw that this was an issue, and we were attempting to within our scope and what we could do immediately, try and at least help them, but having a- any one of us go in long-term is not a solution.
I don't, I mean, I don't think this group can fund a custodian. I mean, that's gonna cost fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
So it seems like we just need to well, continue to advocate.
Debbie?
The concern, it really is, um, among the staff too, is the lag in hiring someone. Um, George was one of our custodians, gave his notice at the beginning of the calendar year, and his replacement just started a couple of weeks ago. Um, Paul has already given his two weeks' notice. The position's not even posted yet. So I mean, this, this is, these things are are avoidable. There's, there's a timeframe in which that
So maybe that's something that the chair, the new chair and the new vice chair can follow up, um, with the town about maybe expediting that process or being more transparent and.
I think the trustees have to take that on.
Yeah.
The, the other thought, could we, um, pay for like just a general cleaning, even if it's like once or twice a year?
Yes.
Cause I think that would probably be worth it.
We've also asked, Debbie offered, since I didn't delegate it directly to her, to find out who we could pay on our custodial team to come Memorial Day weekend and do a thorough rug cleaning while we're closed for a couple of days. Not yet, no.
So we had Paul scheduled to do it.
Yeah.
Job with the housing authority. He's no longer in the custodian unit, so we had to contact Bob Berger, and we're waiting to hear back from him as to, because it has to go through now Pat, then Todd, then Joe, and then if none of them want it, then Paul can, can take that job.
Which is, uh, in two days.
Okay. To be, they haven't billed us for that work, which is nice, cause it's time and a half. They, they, the town did cover the cost at least of the extra work the last time we did it. Hopefully they will again.
So at this point, I would say that we should probably table that and, um, maybe by next meeting. Um, Roger, John, you would have more of an update connecting with the, the town about that.
Is that usually William or is that Evan? Is that William that's taking on that type of, um, task as far as in the T A's office?
Yeah, I think William.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Um, Beth, do you have any other, um, updates that we haven't covered?
I will email this out too, so you have all the numbers and statistics. Um, I'll just, we are down a little bit from both last month and last year in terms of circulating physical items and digital items, which is to be expected as the weather gets nicer. And also, we hadn't been doing as much purchasing because of the hold. And I have the Friends meeting coming up. It's on our calendar too. Um, the yes log and no log is always really fun to read, so I'll send that out for you. We try really hard to turn nos into yeses, and there are some things that I find that I'm like, oh, uh, you know, if a patron complains to the staff that teens are being allowed, then what was the follow-up? Like, how was it addressed? Because if it's not okay for the staff to just go, uh-huh, yeah, they're allowed, I know they're teens. No, we need to make sure staff are upholding policy. So you'll see some of that on the the yes and no log, and we addressed it at a last staff meeting as well, that I don't wanna just see that, you know, the bathroom was disgusting, comment from a patron. Okay, well, did the staff member then get in touch with the building department to get somebody over? So we're doing some clarifying a policy and procedure with that tool as well.
Thank you. Um, is there any other comments or questions for Beth about her director's report?
I'll, I'll add, um, that pursuant to your subsequent email, I signed up for the trustee deep dive for next Wednesday, the thirty-first at six. So that sounded really cool.
Yeah, they do a lot of great training.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Tuck?
Um, two things. One is I wouldn't suggest that any patron that complains about the dirtiness, that you pass them to the town. Send, tell them to send an email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we can't do it.
And then the second question, the, the, the scheduling rooms had the little iPad things out front that we never used. Did the, did anything get resolved with those?
I had asked for there to be an I T solution to lock them down to just that website.
Yeah.
I don't, somebody was gonna play around with it?
I think you and I.
Did you guys play around with it?
And then once we pulled it up, we realized how that the site's not very friendly for devices, and everything is really small.
Yeah, so it works, but, uh, it doesn't look nice on those tablets at all. Oh, it's difficult, it's not user-friendly, but it works.
And the, the locations for the tablet holders do not have any electricity near, anywhere remotely near them.
Had to charge, you'd have to charge.
So it's an additional closing duty now of, it would be an additional closing duty of staff to remove them all, charge them, set them up again in the morning. I think a better solution would be to just put a Q R code on the door. So many people have mobile phones, you can take a picture of it. The mobile version, I don't think is that challenging, um, and then they can make their own reservation if the room's available.
Yeah. Can we repurpose those devices? I can't remember what.
Yeah, we'll just put them into the, um, the circulating laptop collection.
Doesn't come up.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions?
I, I will also say that I asked staff if they wanted to visit the idea of changing software for the calendar uh, and room reservation software, and they were just like, we can't take, no, we don't wanna learn anything new, even though this one's clunky, just please don't change it, so.
Eventkeeper?
Yeah, I like Eventkeeper a lot.
I think it's fine.
And it's, it's quick and easy from the backend. It's a little more challenging, I think, from the patron side, but staffer available and willing to do it for and with patrons.
I do have another thing. Um, we used to do, um, a staff appreciation party each year. I don't know if that's still something that with COVID, I'm sure it shut down, but, um, could we put that on the agenda for, for next meeting?
We usually don't.
Staff appreciation?
Oh, okay, that's. It's hard to figure out something that they really want. It's not with us.
We can
It's not a party with us.
We can put, uh, talk about staff appreciation at the next meeting. It, moving on to public input, um, there is no public present with us today, so, um.
I had, uh, someone, a friend had texted me and, and asked for clarification. I, I hadn't read the details of the policy, and I should have, about unaccom- alright, so in the teen room, uh, parents are, are not allowed or are allowed to accompany their kid or not?
They can come in. They should not be pulling up a chair and hanging out. So it's, it's come in and browse, make sure your kid is comfortable.
Okay.
But then don't take up that space that was designated for teenagers. It makes teenagers uncomfortable to have adults just hanging out.
Right.
Um, especially if they're not attached to a kid, which had happened once in the past.
Okay, right.
Um, we had, uh, last week, two parents who came in, they had an eleven-year-old and a thirteen-year-old and another thirteen-year-old, and the, the kids were all playing a card game of some kind, and the parents like just sat, took up space at a booth and hung out, and an hour later, I was like, hey, so glad you guys are here. But technically, like, we do have this, we have both an unattended child policy that says zero to seven, parent has to be in proximity, eight to twelve, in the building, thirteen and up, okay to be alone. And then we also have this unaccompanied adult policy, which is, you really shouldn't be like hanging out in the teen space. And they said, well, we have an eleven-year-old, we thought we had to be right with the eleven-year-old. They said, you'd have to be in the building, but not right on top of them. And then they said, but the thirteen-year-old, first time in here, not comfortable. I totally get it.
Alright.
So one way to start to loosen the apron strings, sure, hang out this time, but going forward.
Okay.
Stay for a few minutes, make sure they know where you'll be, and then be in the building. And then if they are thirteen and they're comfortable being alone and they know how to reach you, then yes, you don't have to be here anymore. But with the eleven-year-old, parent still has to be in the building. Another solution is, since you're playing a card game, we have other meeting spaces that are larger that could accommodate what you're trying to do, that's all ages. And then you're not also listening to the F-bombs from the gaming room, which frankly, we let go. We pick our battles if they're saying, you know, F you at each other and it's violent language or hate speech, we nip it in the bud. When a ten-year-old comes in to browse, we're like, can't have it, there's a little kid, tone it down, and they do. But for the most part, teens are allowed to be teens in that space.
Right.
So it's not really conducive to adults hanging out in the space.
Okay.
Does that clarify?
Yeah, I'll, right, yeah.
And I'm happy to have conversations with people, and a lot of the time, it's just, so going, you know, just so you know, this time we'll allow it, but going forward, mm, really not appropriate to hang out. And it's the same with, um, twelve-year-olds coming into the teen room. Technically, you gotta be thirteen or seventeen. We'll say, alright, well, you can stay today, cause we don't want you to be ashamed or lose face in front of your friends, but next time, parent has to be in the building, cause you're only twelve. Once you're thirteen, they don't have to be here. So we try to be a little flexible.
Did anyone else have any questions from public? That got passed through? No, okay. So no other public input, I'm just going to reiterate that the next meeting's coming up. Um, Policy Subcommittee, June seventh at seven P M. in the Grafton Public Library Room Two Nineteen. The Friends Annual Board Meeting is Friday, June ninth at the Grafton Public Library, six thirty. And then the next Board of Library Trustees is June twenty-eighth, seven P M. right here at the Grafton Municipal Center, Meeting Room A.
And before, were you ready to ask for a, a motion to adjourn? Because I have one more comment that, that may be somewhat detailed, if, if you'll allow that.
I will.
Alright, so without getting into a big hodgepodge of Robert Surles, the question I had was, and, and Erin had pointed it out, uh, when we reorganize, and he commented that typically, you know, committees reorganize at the beginning of a meeting, and that reorganization, if it did happen, would necessarily cause that leadership to change as of that point. I don't know if it was entirely clear when we voted, whether, although I will be taking over and running the meeting, starting with the next regularly scheduled meeting, that I become chair and you become chair, uh, vice chair at the adjournment of this meeting? Or not?
My understanding is that you're, you are chair and vice chair at the adjournment of this meeting, because Karen, who is the current chair until this is adjourned, she is actually, um, completed her service on the board.
Correct.
So if you do not take that on immediately afterwards, there is a lapse.
Right, because I didn't know how that worked with you being acting chair for the purposes of running the meeting up until that point. And I just wanna make sure that the minutes, you know, will accurately reflect that it's, even if we don't revote this, that it's by consensus that we understand that the leadership changes at the adjournment of this meeting. Is that everyone's understanding? Alright, I wasn't completely, you know, alright.
I think it's good. That's good you brought it up.
Alright, um.
Oh, one more comment.
Yes.
Bill Robidoux deserves, uh, uh, a round of applause. What are we going on, two and a half hours, Bill? Yeah, thank you.
Oh my gosh, I have no idea.
Bill Robidoux and, and, and
He's used to us.
Bob DeToma, G C T V is awesome, so.